Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 24th, 2024 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. To start out, I would like to say how much I appreciate that there is so much public interest and attendance in this meeting. In order for us to all enjoy each other's company and be able to hear speakers and allocate time to each speaker, depending on interest in each matter, we are likely to impose a time limit for public comment. I will ask for interest at the time each matter arises in making public comment, and we will make a determination at that point in time on what the time limit will be. Please make sure that each and every person here silences any of their audio devices so that we are not interrupted by beeping, and I will make sure that I do the same. So, that being said, I call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, we would like to start the meeting by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Gallagher, could you address in that pledge?
I believe in the flag of the United States of America, in the public, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
You're welcome.
The first matter on our agenda is ZBA 2023-08, Joanne Hamburg, 1341 Grinch Road. This is a review of the special permit under Section 181.94 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance issued after remand from the Worcester Superior Court Zoning Appeal, CA Number 2385 CV00600. By consent of all parties and by order of the court to the Board of Appeals dated September 27th, 2023 pursuant to Section 181.332 located in the rural residential district. All right, welcome all the familiar faces this evening. I believe we have the permit holder and her counsel at the table. Could you each please state your name and city of residence for the minutes?
Joanne Hamburg McGurn, 54 Chase Road, Lunenburg, Mass.
Very good, thank you. Welcome, Ms. McGurn. Counsel?
Attorney Lou Levine, Acton, Mass.
Okay, thank you. For the public, Ms. McGurn approached myself and the vice chair, Mr. McLaughlin, for a meeting with the Building Department during the month of August regarding construction of the recreational building on the park location as designated on the plan. She had, and I'm just going to summarize briefly and let you speak for yourself, she had run into some issues with ledge being in the site that had been laid out for the building. She approached the board, or really myself and Mr. McLaughlin, regarding the possibility of relocating and redesigning the recreational building. The design would have been, would be modified to one that was more consistent with the style, I will say, of the other homes in the park. Due to the ledge present, her representation is that she would need to conduct further prohibited activities, and rock grinding particularly, I think, was mentioned, in order to construct in that location, but that either way, due to the issues that she had run into with ledge, that completion would not take place until the spring. We have brought that to this meeting because either the redesign of the recreation recreational building, or the re-institution of those activities will affect the park residents or the Butters. And this is best resolved with public comment and public input. And so that is what is before the board today, and I will leave it to you, ma'am or sir, to present the issue to the board.
Well, like you said, we met July 9th at the meeting, and I explained that we did find ledge and I wasn't able to hammer, so we tried to cut the ledge, which did not work. So I did request a meeting with you on July 16th. We met on July 23rd, and I proposed a different building to try to expedite the time process because the other building would take quite a while to build. And by doing a modular, while we're putting in the foundation, the modular company could be building the building to have it shipped to us, so then, once it was on-site, it would, you know, come together much quicker. So trying to speed up the time limits and, you know, meet all our requirements, we did some test holes and determined what we feel is going to be the best spot, which is pretty much the original spot that the building was designed on, the plans from Whitman and Bingham. It just moves it back a little bit because of the ledge that we found. I did take your input on the design of the building, so I went in front, went to the modular company and had them redesign it. I had sent you a plan, but I had, I brought copies of the plan that is being submitted to the state. I didn't want to wait too long because everything takes time, so I went ahead and spent the money to have the engineer design the plan. I do have copies of the plan that I can give you all if you'd like to see it.
And this is the plan that you had sent. Had there been any modifications since that time?
Um, yes.
This was the second plan.
No, that's pretty much, well, it's shorter.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we had to make it shorter because that was a 70-foot plan. This one is 60 feet.
Okay.
But it's basically two less rooms. We just redesigned it a little. I'll give you some copies of it if you'd like.
Okay.
Did residents have seen it?
Thank you.
We did have a meeting. And I said I didn't even give all the residents some short of the plans so they have an idea what we were looking at designing, and they all seemed pretty happy about it.
And the hope is that after tonight, we can get it submitted to the state for their approval so that, once it's approved, I can get it to Felix for his approval, and we can start construction.
Okay. So the state, the plan has been drawn, but the state approval has not been received yet or submitted yet because you're waiting for. I just want to underpin the process.
Yes, I didn't want to go too, you know, trying not to spend any money that's foolish.
And the first property that was located where the ledge is, have the designs all done for that already?
Yep, and those designs are done now, too.
Mm-hmm.
As I say, the problem with the other one is that one was on a slab, and because of the ledge and not being able to remove it, and now, you know, so we've called off all the contractors on that project.
Okay. If I recall, there was an attempt to remove the ledge without rock grinding through the means of a
Saw.
very large deli slicer, I was going to say?
Yes.
That sliced off small portions and ate into the rot. And can you just explain what happened with that, please?
Basically, they cut it for four days in the small slivers so that we could use the excavator with the bucket and try to remove the pieces. It just wouldn't work. It was killing the bucket on the machine, and it was really a waste of money.
So when you say it doesn't work, did the, did the saw break?
No, the excavator bucket was falling apart from trying to pull it up, and it made small slits. I know you've been out there, but the ledge was just so hard that it was just a waste of time and energy.
The plans for the larger building, the original building?
Mm-hmm.
Are you still willing to go forward with them if there is the means to construct them?
I don't think so at this time. I'd have to re, I mean, I'd have to re-coordinate everybody and try to get a schedule. It's difficult where, you know, everybody wants it done like yesterday, and when you have so many different contractors involved, you can't control that.
Counsel, anything additional to add?
I think at this point, as I understand from Mrs. Hamburg, is she's progressed with the building. She told me earlier this evening that it should be submitted to the state shortly. State has to approve it. Your building inspector, commissioner, has to approve it. And correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there's a couple of months of construction.
Yeah, once, once, once it gets approved by the state, it'll take about four to six weeks for the modular company to build it and then ship it to me on-site. It'll be very similar to the other homes that we build, and it takes us a couple of months to put it together because I have a regular crew that does this all the time.
So if I was to extrapolate that, Madam Chairman, that would be, you know, five months from when we get the go-ahead, give or take?
All of the go-aheds, the state and the local, do you mean?
Well, state, and, yeah, I don't know how involved a local commissioner gets after the state, but I assume there's some involvement, but I'm just guessing that that process is going to be approximately five months.
Do you have any projection on the length of time for the state process?
They say it could be a month, could be quicker, really depends.
I am going to try to get this version up on the screen, and while I do that, I am going to go to the building commissioner for any comment on this version of the plan that we've just reserved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm looking it through. I don't see any foundation plans in here, so I couldn't comment on that, and I see that the engineer is an out-of-state engineer, that the actual structural plan is stamped with his Pennsylvania stamp. But they may accept it because he has another page full of stamps on here, too, so they may accept that. I don't really see issues from a building code perspective, but I haven't done a thorough review. I know from energy code, there's a bunch of things that were going to be, that are not included in here that would need to be addressed. I do mirror what Ms. Hamburg said, that she did meet with me a number of times as well, and then I suggested, she really was trying to find a way that we could move this ahead without having to go through the modification, and I said, there's no way that we can do that, that it has to come, and we scheduled that informal meeting with, as was mentioned before, yourself and Vice Chair McLaughlin and myself with Ms. Hamburg to go over, go over the different scenarios. And, and we'll see. I know that the state, that one month is actually pretty, it can go either way with that. With, with my department, it would be a pretty quick review, but the site issues, I really, I'm not sure about. Just to address one of the things that I know is going to be addressed here, I was talking to Commissioner Erickson out, he had to leave for some personal reasons, he couldn't stay, but he asked me to report back about the drainage issue on the other site at the cul-de-sac. The DPW engineering department hasn't, hasn't been able to sign off on it yet, not because of anything that's been done wrong, but because we haven't had any significant enough rains yet to check how it's been, how it's working. So, once we have significant rains, which may be in the spring eventually, just because weather, I don't know if we have big rains coming, they can't sign off on their full sign-off until, until that happens. And I believe there's also some issues that our conservation agent, Herlen Jamie, said that the conserva, that the Conservation Commission is dealing with on the site currently because apparently they needed, and Ms. Hamburg might be able to weigh in on this better than me, but how it was described to me was they needed to have individual certificates of compliance for each lot, and that was never done. For whatever reason, it might have been the cities, it might have been, we don't know, but they're trying to remedy it now, and so they're in the process through the Conservation Commission on trying to gain, trying to work towards compliance as well with it, and I believe Ms. Hamburg has been working with them, but they have active work happening as well.
So if I can comment?
You may.
I do have a letter. I did reach out to Commissioner Erickson to try to get a letter, and he sent us a letter basically saying exactly that, that we just haven't had enough rain for him to really say that it's working right or it's not working right. In regards to the Conservation Commission, I had three oaks come out. They're the ones that were doing the wetlands replication, and they have submitted a letter to Jamie Herland, and so she has that. We do have a meeting to go in front of the conservation. I don't know anything about the lots that Felix is talking about, but they're just talking about the wetland replication area, and I have a meeting with them next month on that, but I've already addressed that by having my wetland specialists go out and send a letter verifying that the wetland replication area has been taken care of.
Okay. I am certainly going to leave it to the Conservation Commission to take care of that issue with you. I do not wish to interfere with anything that they are doing on the drainage or the certificates of conditions on individual lots. I am going to attempt now, my limited technological capacity, to share the plan.
Madam Chairman, do you have a copy of the letter from the DPW?
I don't, in front of me, and I would appreciate it if you
You don't have it.
wanted to give.
Do you have an extra copy?
I can make one. You can give her that one.
All right, we'll give you one, and it's, it's pretty consistent with the building commissioner said.
Thank you.
I should write the other way from the front.
All right. This, it essentially says, no rain. We don't know if, we haven't observed any standing water, but we don't know that anything is wrong, but with no rain, we can't give you a definitive answer.
Okay. Because this is a communication, I'm going to summarize it. It is from Ryan Colleen, the Assistant City Engineer. This serves as acknowledgment of changes made to the drainage system at the northernmost point of Nigel Court. This is pertaining to the issue of standing water on the abutting property known as parcel S 22290 or 0 Arnhow Farm Road, which is situated directly behind Woodland Estates. The changes made include the addition of a stone swale directed into a flare section of 12-inch drain pipe connected into the stormwater management system. The goal of this modified drainage is to convey surface waters from a low point along the Butters' property line. The engineering department has observed the area of concern on multiple occasions over a month-long period throughout July and August of 2024 during normal working hours of 7:30 to 3:30 Monday through Friday. On every occasion, the area was observed having no standing water present. However, over the course of the time period which the drainage was observed, there has not been a rainfall event substantial enough to demonstrate the efficiency of the system. Throughout the dates observed, the highest total 24-hour rainfall was less than .34 inches of rain on August 6, 2024, and the rainfall only occurred in short durations lasting less than a few hours. At this time, our determination remains inconclusive. We recommend continuing to observe the site to see how it performs during an extended rainfall event exceeding one inch to demonstrate proper function of the new drainage modification. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to have you keep this in the records because this goes with the minutes it's been submitted. Okay. All right, on the screen, you now see the proposed most recent alternative for the recreational building. And I see as a difference, you've noted that it is 10 feet shorter than the prior design, and what is noted as a game room, there was, I believe, two offices and then another room, so there's a little bit, it's a little bit shorter than the other design. And it was lobby, large office, office. Can you explain what the offices are going to be used for, please?
Well, there's a game room.
Because there's only one office now.
Yeah, I mean, it's an office. I mean, we probably will have an office there. We don't have anything specifically lined up for the building. The residents want to use it for, you know, potluck suppers, craft nights, game nights, social events, and the office might just be a meeting room to discuss things. I don't know, but that's the building.
Will the office be available for resident use and not just business use?
Yeah, the whole building is for the residents, but, I mean, we probably will have a presence there because they need us.
Okay. What was the reason for shortening the length of the building?
Ledge.
Are you within all of the setbacks required by CONSCOM?
We're in the same position as all the other buildings would have been, so yes.
Is there a plot plan? And I'm sorry, because I've been looking at the building design. Is there a plot plan in here?
I didn't, I didn't bring one, but I know that we had discussed one previously when we met. I don't, I just didn't bring one, but you might have one with the old file?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have, do you have the one when we met in the office? No?
So certainly, I'll have to try to look for that, but, so just to be sure I understand, the location will be in the different location than the prior building as noted on the approved plan?
The only difference is instead of, so the first building with Whitman and Bingham went this way, the one that we were trying to build went this way, and now the new one's back this way, and it's still all within the same requirements. I didn't think of bringing a plan. I can try to look it up on my phone, but I know that I had kind of showed it to you when we were together, but.
Yes. And if we look at the requirements, other than the location for this building on, that were on the approved plan and the, and the approved decision, so I'm just going to bring up the last decision for my own reference. All right. Condition number 14, the recreation unit servicing the development residents will, shall be completed and open for use by the residents by July 1, 2024. Recreation building to be at least 28 feet by 48 feet and consistent in design with the remaining neighborhood structures. So what are the, what are the measurements on this building?
28 by 61.
So as we, as we've discussed, you are going to exceed the deadline and have already obviously exceeded the deadline for completion of the building. There are a number of, I think, other things that are to be completed, and initially, the project was designed to be fully completed by November 20. Is there any other item that you will not be able to fulfill in time?
The last three homes are all completed. The final home will have its final inspection tomorrow. We're paving all the driveways on October 3, and the community, all the homes will be finished, and I'd like to request the occupancy permits for all of them because I have them sold and residents would like to move into them. And that's it. You know, there's really nothing else that's left except the community building, and I do intend on building it. I always did. It's just, unfortunately, it's taken time, and it was never my first project to be done there.
That's the tension that exists between the city and the developer. The developer's desire is to complete the projects that generate funds, I understand, and the city needs a way to ensure that the remaining parts of the project are completed and completed to design. And that's been the tension, I think, throughout this project. I hear you that you were concentrating on getting the other ones built. I hear you that you have buyers ready. Buyers being ready means you move to sell the property, and it, just as I have known and I now have to deal with the issue, that I know we are not going to have a completed recreational building timely, and we have to figure out what happens from here. The plea that there is a buyer for the home that we specifically held the certificate of occupancy on. I, I am one board member, but it does not move me because this situation has been known to you as well. That being said, I, I think a number of board members are going to have comment here. I am going to reserve that until after the public comment. Is there anything you wanted to add before we went to public comment?
I just don't see why you need to hold any of the permits. I've done everything that the board and the other boards have requested of me. I've done them as quick as I can. I've tried to keep you guys informed every step of the way. I've reached out to Felix multiple times. I think I've done everything possible to show that I plan on finishing this project, and it's a beautiful community with amazing residents. I think Pittsburgh should be proud of it. So I don't see any reason why, and I have no desire not to build the community building, but it's going to take a little bit of time.
I'm going to leave that without further comment on my part. All right, can I have a raise of hands? Who would like to make a public comment and publicly speak? Okay, one, two, three, four, okay. All right, and I know that we have a couple of people online who wish to speak publicly. I am going to stop my screen sharing. What I am going to do is set a three-minute limit for comment. Each, each person who wishes to make a public comment will come to the podium. You will see on that podium three lights, green, yellow, and red. I will start the green light when your speaking time begins. The yellow indicates that we are approaching the end of your three minutes, and when the red button lights up, that is the time for you to conclude your sentence and stop speaking. If you do exceed that time substantially, I will stop you, and that is merely so that we can all have an opportunity to have a say. The first thing I am going to do is go to The first thing I am going to do is go to any online participants who would like to speak. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Kathy DeChamps has asked to speak. Ma'am, please state your name and city of residence at the beginning, and then you are welcome to speak for... Oh, you're kidding me. There we go. For three minutes, ma'am, you may begin.
My name is Kathy DeChamps. I live at 1307 Ringe Road. And I've been a, an abuser since the beginning of this project. So I'm happy to hear that we're getting to the end of it. And I really am concerned that the recreation building is dependent on a state permit, which is another month. In the, what I didn't hear is, in the time limit to get that approved, if it is a month, will the project be completed by December 30th? And all construction, all trucks, all, you know, construction materials are all cleaned up on the lot? Is that the expectation? Then could I get the clarification?
All right. Ma'am, I'm going to provide you just a repeat of the statement was that it would be plus five months for the completion of the construction of the recreation building.
If I may amend, Chairman, that's the, that's, I appreciate the abuser's comments. But when I said five months, that's a great, the greatest part of that is permitting and construction of this modular building off-site. Okay? Then it, it's delivered the way the other ones were delivered, you know, on large, you know, trucks. So it's really up, but then, you know, the interiors and the finishes, which I think is about six weeks. So there's not a major construction activity going to occur in connection with the recreation building. And again, the five months and the building commissioner can weigh in. Most of it is permitting and off-site construction of the modular building. When we get onsite, it's the finishing matters, which Joanne said would be approximately six weeks. And none of those are going to have, correct me if I'm wrong, none of those are going to be involving large trucks. They're going to be the plumber, the electrician, and people adjusting carpeting and things like that.
Well, the building will be a large, the building is going to be a large vehicle.
No, the building will deliver it. Yeah, that'll, but that'll happen pretty quickly and it'll be put in place. So it isn't like we're erecting a typical building, you know, from the ground up and there's framing going on for weeks and weeks and stuff like that. It comes together.
So, so after permitting is concluded, it might be five months until the project is concluded, but the onsite construction time of that might be about six weeks?
Oh, it'll be pretty quick, yes. The biggest part is the crane putting it on the foundation. And then the site crew...
I think in my five months, I had permitting, both at the state level and the local level, a couple of months to build a building, and then the six weeks to two months.
So that included the time for the state to approve the design?
As well as the local.
Okay.
Commissioner. That's again, approximately could be five, could be six. And again, most of that is not onsite and until, you know, the end.
And weather delay, because that takes us to about March. So I would expect that there would be a weather delay for construction until about April, May.
Hopefully not. If the building's put together, the rest is pretty much all inside. I mean, I wouldn't think, as long as we can get the building up before the weather changes, I wouldn't think there's going to be really any significant delay due to weather, just because it's all inside work.
Okay. And you're able to construct the foundation in the weather that...
I agree with you, Madam Chairman, and nothing happens as on time or planned, especially in construction. But I was trying to come up with at least a reasonable, I didn't want to talk about a month. I didn't want to talk about three months, you know. And I took the commissioner's comments because I agreed with him. And we don't have control over the state, all right?
Right.
So there's no reason that they shouldn't approve it. But then the building inspector, commissioner mentioned, you know, energy code things that we might have to, you know, amend the plans for. So we'll, we'll get it done. I mean, we have to do it. It's not like I'm negotiating, you know, with the building commissioner.
You know, the other thing is, like Felix had mentioned, the foundation, that, that can go in as soon as we know that the building size and location is acceptable. We could start working on the foundation and provide you with plans on at least starting the foundation while, like I said, while the building's being built.
Okay. I'm going to, Mr. DeChamps, I think you had about a minute left, so I am going to start, if you have anything further to add.
No, thank you for your time.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. There's one other person in attendance virtually. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. All right. Not seeing a response. Would anyone present like to speak on this matter? Sir, you're welcome to the podium. Please state your name, and then you may start your, your comment.
Thank you. My name's Hal Melanson, 13 Bennett Road. My mom still lives there. And the zoning board of appeals acquiesced to, refresh my memory, but it was either three, four, or seven more buildings because of promises that were made. And then suggestions were made that, that we, they, that you reduce any fines. And now, I won't go back 20 years, but till the springtime, here we are. Oh my God, we found ledge. Are you kidding me? We found ledge in a place that they bombed the whole top of the mountain off to be where we are today? We found ledge. Oh my goodness. This is unbelievable that we're actually listening to having to use blasting or hammer I don't know, did anybody, I don't know this process, but there's a Dexpan chemical that's used for blasting or, or breaking ledge. Don't know environmentally how that sets. Don't know anything about it. But one more question. Why is there a foundation going in rather than a slab? Maybe it's a permitting, or maybe it's by code. I don't know that. But these are questions that I have that blasting doesn't seem like a great idea to me.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I've, I've let you go over a minute, so, but thank you very much for your comment. It's appreciated. I am going to turn...
Can I ask one more question?
No. Thank you. But another person may ask it for you. I believe that the proposal for the large building will require at least rock grinding. The proposal for this building does not require rock blinding or dra, or blasting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just to make sure that question got answered. Is there anybody else here who would like to make public comment? Counselor Fleming, you're welcome to the podium.
Thank you.
Please state your name and city of residence.
Marissa Fleming, Counselor for Ward 5, 1240 Ashby State Road.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I want to begin by echoing the sentiments. It is a wonderful community. As you can see, all the community is here. Right now, my blood pressure is over the top. When I heard the words, there's just no time. There's 20 years this has been going on, and this project still is not done. And the one thing that these residents that are already living there were promised was a recreation center. But this is where the holdup is. Not the new buildings where profit is going to be had, but where the people have already paid for their units and not reaping the benefit of a recreational site. I ask that you hold off on these occupancy permits until this recreation center is done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there any other person who would like to make comment? Sir, in the back. Please state your name and city of residence, and you may begin.
Okay. My name's George McGee. I live at 157 Nigel Court in Pittsburgh.
Thank you, sir.
And one question I have for you people is, how come we never get a notice when these meetings are taking place? I've, I've been associated with boards and stuff before, and if they're doing work in my neighborhood or anything like that, about anything, we get a notice that these meetings are taking place. As of yet, I've been coming here now for almost, what, two and a half, three years? Never get a notice from the city of Pittsburgh on this. Okay? Another thing is, nobody has really even asked us how we even feel about this rec center. You know? I mean, you're just saying it has to be done, but what's it going to cost us to get this done now? Is it, is it feasible to even, look, if she's going to go up on the park rent to an exorbitant amount to try to cover the cost of this recreation center, I don't think we want it. And has anybody ever asked the residents of Woodland Estates if they really want this rec center?
So you still have time left.
Okay. Well, I got my point across, didn't I?
But to briefly respond to you.
Yes.
That's the purpose of our being here today, and I'm glad you're here to make comment.
Right. I would suggest the board have a letter written to every resident in Woodland Estates before this goes any further to see if we even want the rec center. Because right now, I've talked to Joanne. Joanne can tell me what it's going to cost us when this thing goes up. And do we really need it? I'd rather have her put in a swimming pool.
No swimming pool, George. Too much work.
For 12-month, in, in, in ground 12-month swimming pool, I hope.
Well, seasonable would be fine.
Seasonable is about three months in New England, sir.
I, I know, but, you know, it's fine.
All right.
That's, that's, that's all I have to say.
Appreciate your time and for coming to the meeting. Is there any other person who would like to make comment? Ma'am, in the back, you're welcome to the podium. Please state your name and city of residence, and you will have three minutes.
Yep. My name's Brenda Widmore. I live at 118 Nigel. I'm right in the middle of all of it. I've seen the old when it started. I've seen the new. This is ridiculous. The last comment is so true. There's maybe 10 to 15 people that I know of in this complex who want this recreation unit. The people in the beginning have been promised it for years. It's true. I came in 2020. I was promised a recreation center. I could give a rat's bum about that, okay? I want peace and harmony. All of a sudden, we got to have this because five to seven people in the area decided, yes, we want it because we were promised it. Never mind that it took 20 years to get this all going. And it's been litigation after litigation, and this and that, and lost records and lost this on both sides, okay? The city of Pittsburgh, as well as Joanne, and the last lawyer, and the last thing that we've gone through. This is absolutely disgraceful for the elderly people in this area. This is one of the first projects ever done. Kudos to this woman for doing it. Kudos for her to her for staying with it. Damn, I'm sorry to you people that it's taken a long time. I'm sorry that it's hurt. And it's the noise and things like that. But things take time. And this recreation center, these new people don't even know about it. They don't know what it's, that's what they're here for today, is try to learn it. We have had an association board meeting, and we've tried to tell people, this is going to cost you money. Do you realize that? Do you know how many people don't know it's going to cost us money? They don't know that. We didn't know that. I didn't move that when I moved into 2020. I didn't move in for a recreation center. I moved in to have a safe place where I had a knee replacement, and I could be on the first floor. And I had an operation in my neck, and now I have wide areas to walk through. My mother-in-law can come over, who's 89, and be safe in my home and stay overnight, okay? That's two sets of elderly. I'm 68. My mother-in-law's 89. I moved here to be close to her, to help her, in her three-floor house, okay? And, and you're taking this away from us residents. We don't care. A lot of us don't care about that center. We care about our quality of life and living there. I visit with about 20 people here at the condo place, at this place. And we chat on our forefront porches. We chat at the outside gazebo that has a gate, curtains around it. We have parties there. We have events. Who said we had to have this recreation center? Just because she said it 25 years ago to 10 residents. And then she kept promising about us that, but she never stated a date.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nothing was set in stone.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. We appreciate that. We all have to remain courteous to each other to remain in this building. Is there any other person present who would like to make a comment? Sir, you're welcome to the podium. Please state your name and city of residence, and you will have three minutes.
Michael Donley, Mount Nealem Road in Pittsburgh. A couple of observations. Blasting is a negative. A slab would eliminate the blasting. It's a positive thing. In terms of time, it would save time. Making the building smaller would save time. Both of those have value. We're losing value, and, and it would cost less to do both of them. We'd get done faster. But I haven't overlooked that. With regard to the need for a recreation center, it was promised to you, and you, you agreed to it. That was a promise that was made to you. You have to take a look at the value. That's, that's really city infrastructure. And the value of that project is part of a city infrastructure. And it's an amenity that people would value outside of the, outside of the park. Not that they could use it, but nevertheless, it's part of city infrastructure, makes it more valuable. So I would weigh, I, I think that the zoning board has to weigh the savings of a smaller building, the savings of a slab over a full foundation and blasting. And, and that has, ought to have some value to the zoning board. I know it's going to have value to the developer. What's the value to you? And then I appreciate the, the light explanation. Pity the colorblind.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, you, would you like to get up to speak? If you're going to speak or ask a question, I need to have you at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening, everyone. Mary Ellen Mara Christian, 71 Bennett Road in Pittsburgh. I'm just still a little unclear if this is going to require blasting, jackhammering, any type of rock noise at all.
I think, we've said over and over again, the design of the building was created, dictated by the board's indication that they didn't want ledge removal. You know, blasting, all those things you mentioned. So we've been in this redesign mode to do that.
Yep. And I, I'm, that, that's great news, I think, because I am certainly against any kind of blasting. It is the one thing that was promised us, and it is a deadline that Joanne met for October 31st of, no, I'm sorry, December 31st of last year. And the no, no noise was part of that list. As well as, I'm sure it was, it was something that you met because it also included seven more trailers, seven more homes. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that. And I agree with what Mr. Donley just talked about. What I am a little concerned about, I'm happy that the residents are here and that there's and that they're giving their opinion, so I'm not sure if it's divided up there. I support if they want the rec center. I support it if they don't, that's fine. I don't live there, so it doesn't really affect me. The noise is what was going to affect me. But I hope that if they do have a rec center and you decide to give them the rec center, that the cost does not go on to these folks. I mean, it's sad, I mean, I understand you that if, the reason if they don't want it is because of the cost to them, I don't think that's very fair. So I'm just speaking on their behalf. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna pause a moment to take a brief, make a brief comment. There are things that this board has control over, and there are things it does not. Costs to the residents is not something that this board has control over. Those costs are dictated by the contracts that exist between Ms. Hamburg and the residents. Like any lease, I am sure that there is a point at which the terms may be changed by the agreement of both parties, and if both parties don't come to an agreement, another resolution must be found. But that is the state of affairs, whether or not this recreation building goes in. Leases, while there are some terms, and I am certainly not privy to everyone's lease, there will come a point where change may be made. As far as the contractual issues between residents who bought into the park, and a contractual promise was made that a recreation center would be provided, if Ms. Hamburg fails to fulfill her contractual promise, that is up to the resident and Ms. Hamburg to resolve, whether informally or in court. The promise that we are here concerned about is fulfillment of the plan that was submitted to the board. The plan was submitted by Ms. Hamburg and contained a recreation center. I am gonna move on now to any other public comment. If someone else would like to speak, please raise your hand. Ma'am, you're welcome to the podium. Please state your name, city of residence, and you may speak for three minutes.
My name is Catherine Bennett. I live at 130 Nigel Court.
Thank you.
I've been at Nigel Court for almost five years. We moved in before the pandemic. And like our abutters, we would like to see the project done. In the time that I've been there, the development has doubled in size, so quite a bit of work has been done in the last five years. And at this point, personally, my own opinion as far as the rec center is, if we have it, are we going to use it? Absolutely, because it's gonna be part of our community, and we'll make use of that. If we don't have it, will we find other ways to hold the same functions and events? Yes, because we're a great community, we're great neighbors, and we all like each other, and we do things together. So we will work with one way or the other. I think that Joanne has jumped through all sorts of hoops as far as agreeing to, how can we do this without blasting? How can we do this without jackhammering? How can we get anything done in the time that I've been given? And also, but I can't start because a permit hasn't been given, and all this time has been wasted. So there's been a lot of back and forth, but in the end, the project isn't moving forth. Also, the cost of the rec center, as far as utilities and what other things come from having a rec center, we know, a good number of us know that that's, in the long run, it's gonna come back to us. And it's divided amongst the number of residents. So in withholding the occupancy permits, that lessens the number of residents, therefore, the per-person number will go up. If there's more residents, that number will not go up as high, because there's more people to divide it amongst. So I think that the occupancy permits should be given because the homes are ready for these people who have already purchased them to move into. And then if we go forward with the recreational center, there's more people to help shelve that weight.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any other person present who would like to make comment? Is your hand raised or just resting? Please come to the podium, sir. State your name and city of residence.
Butch McGarn, 238 Fire Road 16. I am Joanne's husband.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment on the ledge removal that we encountered at the beginning of this recreational center. We, Joanne and I, actually did everything in my power, 42 years in construction, and the knowledge of, Felix knows my, I mean, some of the people that I work with. I am a very known person in the city of Boston as far as raising buildings. And I did everything in my power to not blast, not hammer, and try to remove that ledge in that first sighting. It's impossible without putting the building there. Also, what we did was, literally, the building went like this, and swung on a outside pivot point, and it went like that. And we discovered we could put the building there with no ledge, without hammering, without blasting, with a modular unit, with a very quick time turnaround. The other building would have taken me closer a year if we had a blast, stick frame it, foundations, each stratum. So I think the right thing to do is allow us to put the other building, the modular building up. That would go a lot quicker. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other person present who would like to make public comment? All right. Thank you all for your participation today. I am going to read the department comments that we received. This was a comment from Conservation. There is an open order of conditions for the property, so that just notes the issues that we spoke about before. From the Board of Health, if more blasting is to occur, dust control must be implemented. And I certainly agree with you, sir, on that issue. Are there any other board, city department comments that we have? I think it's just the sheet. All right. That being said, I'm going to move to board questions. Mr. Reynolds, any questions?
Yeah, thank you. In terms of the original, the size of the building, say that it's 10 feet shorter. So, and yet, the plans that you've submitted tonight kind of correspond, give or take, a little bit. By a little bit, I mean, give or take a foot, to condition number 14. So, are you, could you just clarify that condition number 14, which reads 28 feet by 48 feet, is the plan that you submitted tonight 10 feet shorter than that?
No, it's bigger.
Bigger.
The original plan was 24 by 48. This one's 28 by 61.
I'm just reading what's in front of me. Do I not have...
I don't have the latest minutes. They weren't out yet, but I do have the previous minutes. But every time, it's always been a 24 by 48, and this building is much bigger.
Yeah, that was the provision within the original decision, and I believe that matched the site work on the original plan. And it said a minimum size.
In the last minutes that we have in me, sir, it references a 28 by 48, condition 14, or number 14.
That's exactly what I'm reading.
Yeah, and this one's 28 by 61.
Correct. So, the point I'm trying to get at is, the 10 feet...
Make it smaller?
Yeah, the 10, you are presenting something tonight that is roughly 28 by 48.
No, 28 by 61.
So it...
Because it has the eight-foot...
It's bigger than, it's not less than.
Correct.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification. The, in this orientation of the building is also spun from a...
The original plan...
From north-south to an east-west or vice versa?
It's right, basically back from the original plan that Whitman and Bingham proposed. It's just back about 20 feet from the original plan.
The original plan was...
Even the last plans that were approved before the building that we, were stick building that we sent to Felix, which was turned, it was, it's basically the same spot. It's just about 20 feet further back.
And over the course of time, it may have been in a different orientation, but where we are today is back at the beginning.
Same location.
Got it.
Yes, same location, same orientation.
Understood. And in terms of, although we don't have a plot planned tonight...
I have one on my phone.
That's good. In terms of the setbacks, is it your understanding that what you're presenting to the board tonight meets all the setbacks?
It's in, yes. I made sure with the engineers that it was positioned properly.
Thank you. The other question I have is just around timing. Heard, you know, a couple of comments tonight about, I'm gonna call it the clock, that the clock starts on December 31st, and then when I read this item number 14, it makes reference to a different date, and I believe what I'm reading here is July 1st. So when does the clock start, in your opinion, as to when this building should have been completed?
I can't do anything until I get my final approvals from the building department.
Sure. When should the clock start?
Once I get my final approval from the building department. I mean, I'm gonna, as soon as everybody's on board, they're supposed to try to submit this to the state by the end of the week.
Is your question...
Am I asking?
After we get the, I'm just asking, is your question, after we get the state and local approvals, you wanna put a timeframe on how...
No, you've mentioned that. What I'm asking about is, is it clear that the recreation building should have been completed and open for use by residents by July 1st, 2024?
That's what you had requested, but there was no way to do it due to the ledge and not being able to hammer or blast. And that's why I've gone back and forth multiple times to try to come up with options.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Byrne, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, you wanna give it? About six or seven meetings ago on this particular subject, I said that the Assouan Dam only took eight years to build, and we've been on this for 20 years. I can't imagine how the residents are aggravated by the dust and the problems that you have up there. But let's go back to how this whole thing started. You promised, as I understand, Counselor, correct me if I'm wrong, the very first person that bought a place there was promised that they would have a recreation building.
At the end of the project.
I don't know whether that is written in covenant, or whether it's just your word, or whatever.
It's my word.
It's your word, which I imagine you will keep.
Absolutely. I have never once said that I was not building the community building.
Because you have these parents, you have all these tenants scared that you're going to charge them for something that is going to increase the value of your property. And they think that you're putting the cost of that particular building on them.
That's...
And I'd like that clarified. I don't think that, although they are getting a added value to their property because of the center that you proposed to build, it's on your dime, not theirs. Am I correct?
Absolutely. But expenses, just, do you want me to comment?
I do.
Okay. Expenses, just like real estate taxes, go up. Insurance goes up, plowing goes up, trash removal goes up. So there are expenses with the community that do increase the community fee. And our community fee, honestly, is one of the lowest in the area.
That's nice. However, these people were promised this 20 years ago, where the cost to you 20 years ago would have been a lot lower than the cost now. And because it's been, because feet have been dragged for such a long period of time by both this board and you, these people are going to be charged an exorbitant amount of money for your expenses on something that should have been done 20 years ago. How were you gonna make them...
I never promised that the building would be done right away. I told them all when...
Oh, okay, I understand.
No, let me finish. I told them, when the community's finished, we would be putting up a community building.
No crosstalk. Thank you.
And the community building, I've never once said I wasn't gonna put it up. So you're making it sound like I never promised it. I stick to my word, and my residents will tell you, if I've ever told them something I was gonna do, I would do.
Please, please, don't tear my heart out now. I'm not accusing you of going back on your word or anything else. I'm just saying that because it took so long to get this building done, it's gonna cost you a lot more than it would have had you put it up 20 years ago, and you're going to pass on that cost to those people.
And before COVID, my homes sold for a lot less. And when we had COVID, the prices of all the materials went up. I can't control those things, and I'm not gonna get into an argument.
We're not passing on the cost of the building.
No, it's not like the building's gonna cost X amount, and we're splitting it between the residents.
The only costs the residents may incur is the cost of maintaining the building.
The maintenance.
Not the cost of building it. Okay? So it is what it is today. Insurance is what it is in 2024. Electricity is whatever in 2000. If, those are the expenses that may get passed on to some degree.
So...
Just like any other community.
Again, let me, let me understand what you're saying. You're saying that the cost of the building is not going to impact the tenants whatsoever, but the cost of maintenance will impact them because there is a cost to keeping everything up?
The community. Yes.
Okay, I just hope that they all understand that.
I think Katie explained that, that they understood that the electric, the heat...
Well, I guess I have to say, obviously, they didn't, because they stood up here in front of us and told us that they expected to pay for it. So I'm glad that I've been able to clear that up, so that we can take that off the table. And thank you very much. I didn't want you to think that I was castigating your word or whatever. I just didn't want that to happen.
Thank you.
I just wanted some answers, because I felt icky inside when I, when they said that they were gonna have to pay for that. It just didn't sit right with me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Mr. Talbot, any questions for the permit holder?
This obviously goes way back beyond my time on the board, but it seems like this revision is going to expedite the process quite a bit, and everybody seems to want this project. I don't see what the issue would be with this, though.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gallagher, any questions for the permit holder?
Yes, Madam Chair. For clarification, would the proposed building be situated on a lot similar to the homes that are around it?
Yes.
Okay, and...
There's one this way, and the community building will go this way, and then the next building goes sideways. But yes.
And as mentioned before, your dimensions will be 28 by 61?
Yes.
Making it bigger than the one prior to this. Are we talking about a full foundation under the building?
No, because of the ledge.
Like a knee wall?
Like a crawl space, yes.
Okay, okay. So, do you feel confident that you can do this without coming back hammering or blasting?
God, I hope so. Because...
We hope so, too.
You know, I mean, we've done, you know, preliminary test holes, which is not digging up the whole site. So we're fairly confident we're not gonna run into any ledge, and the fact that we'll have a crawl space will also give us a little bit of space if we do have a knob that we can work around. And if the placement of the building is just outside the exposed knob that we were not able to get rid of when we wanted to do the slab, and we couldn't do the slab because the knob would have been sticking out through the slab onto the first floor of the building.
Right, I understand. Okay. So if I have to ask you...
Let they do that. It's because of the old hang.
But it is? For a completion date, I realize that you're waiting for approval from the state and approval from our building department, but what do you see as a comfortable completion date? date?
Once we have those approvals, I'm, like I said, the manufacturer told me it would be about four to six weeks for them to build it and ship it to me. If we can get it done quick enough, we can get the foundation in the ground. And like I said, if everybody's on board with the size of the building and the location, I have no problem with hiring the engineer to design the foundation so that we could start installing the foundation while it's being built.
Okay.
I'm trying to do everything to expedite. There's only so much anyone can do.
So.
He's looking for a date.
Just a date.
I think once we, once we get the approvals, probably about four, four and a half months.
So January, February, March?
I would say probably March.
March. Okay.
I think that, oh, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think the chairperson said March, April, and I.
Yeah, I think that's about what we're looking for.
You know, we don't have a crystal ball, but I don't think her approximation is, you know, out of character, inappropriate.
I just think it's a question that is in a lot of minds tonight. People would like, you know, we're saying four months, three months. March is what you pretty much feel comfortable with, correct?
I would say by March or April. The sooner the better.
We would be happy to come back to the board periodically, to tell you in a month what's happened. Okay? So we don't, people think it's, you know, we'd be happy to come back in a month and say, okay, this is where we are with the state. You know, another month, this is where we are with going forward. And that would include, as Joanne said, if we get approvals, we're going to go forward with the foundation now while we're waiting for the building to be built. So I think that's a good idea to keep everybody's feet to the fire and as opposed to, and what, I'm not asking for it. April 1, have the building up, and then April 1 comes and everybody says, what happened to the building? I don't want to do that myself. Rather come here and show progress, and in fairness, if there isn't progress, you know, you have a right to ask, why not? Okay? If there's no good explanation, we may have an issue.
We could also notify you if you wanted electronic emails or whatever as the process.
I would rather physically come here. I think the board's going to have questions. I don't know that it'll take that long, but I think we come here and we say, this is where we are a month from today, or whatever date that the board thinks is a good idea. And then, you know, the future dates would be dictated, and what we're saying is the next milestone, and if the board is comfortable with it. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm also.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to help me understand the construction quality, Mr. Commissioner? The plan that was submitted, the secondary plan, is that built to the same quality and conditions as, as the original stick-built, proposed building would be? Or is this different?
So just like there's differences between contractors who build stick-built construction, there's differences in contractors and within different modular. It, it makes no difference. They're designed to the same code. Arguably, modular may be a better product because, because it has a quality assurance manual and because it's done on a line and has so many checks on it that it could arguably be considered a better product than, than stick-built, but there isn't really definitive evidence on either side of it, and there's arguments to both ends. So I would not be comfortable stating it's, it's superior to stick-built or inferior to stick-built.
Okay. The, the homes that are on site, are those built to the same mass code?
Yes.
Okay. Again, just trying to understand construction. I just feel that, you know, after 20 years of advertising to buyers that this was an amenity that they would receive as a result of what they've been paying over all these years, that they're going to, you know, receive what was advertised and what was expected. I think it's unfortunate that they've paid for this amenity for all these years but haven't had it to enjoy. I think it's important that, that we have a concrete timeframe because revisiting this is, to me, is unacceptable. How many units do not have occupancy?
Three.
At this time?
Mm-hmm.
Right. We, we've applied for occupancy permit for one, and it's, Felix can correct me if I'm wrong, the reason it has issued, it needed a sign-off from the ZBA.
I'm sorry?
To my understanding, we applied for occupancy permit for a unit.
Okay.
The occupancy has not issued because it, there's a requirement, ZBA, sign-off on it, and you haven't.
So presently, there are three without.
Exactly. We've only applied for one, though.
The second one, we just started today.
We will.
Yeah, it's already been submitted.
So there's two that have been submitted. But one has been sitting there for a while.
Yep. And I don't know why that particular one. I know they were going to hold the last one. I was, under my understanding, and that's not the last one, so.
Okay. I think at this time, that's all I have for questions.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. For myself, having located the plans that you brought to our July meeting, and one of them was up on the board recently.
That's the old one.
I put up the one that was labeled new proposed petition.
That was.
Excuse me, position.
Yep, that's the one that Felix approved. If you put it back up, I can show you.
All right. Give me a moment.
That's the 70-foot building. So see how the building goes this way? It actually goes, the home that goes this way, then you can see there's like a little fence outline, that's their fence. Where that walkway is, the building goes this way now and not this way. That's the 70-foot building that was approved previously that we couldn't install. The plan that I was referring to was the one when we met in July.
Well, these are, I, I'm trying to locate a plan that I can refer to. No. Just give me one moment.
What you have to look at is the parking area. It's a little confusing.
This is current, this is the one that you're proposing.
Yep.
So this is a recreation building site plan drawn by Dillison Roy. It is dated 3/27/2024. This is sheet C1.0. And unfortunately, so is the other plan. It's labeled exactly the same.
I think you just used, in a reposition.
I ta, I take that back. There is a notation that it was revised 1/8/24 and 1/18/24. Want to make sure that we have a way to refer to the plan you're proposing. The plan you've submitted regarding the, the drawing permit set, this is drawn by Pleasant Valley Homes, Vanelle Group, Inc. It is a date of 9/18/24. And it consists of. Counselor, I'm sure you appreciate my consternation with people not labeling the numbers of pages anymore. All right. 14 pages.
All right.
All right. I am, I would like to take a moment to circulate the two plans from July among the board members so that they have the ability to see them. I would also like to allow members of the public a short time to review the plans, and for that purpose, we are going to take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe we have resumed. Welcome back to the ZBA meeting. We are still reviewing ZBA 2023-08 on 1341 Grinch Road. Thank you. I hope you all enjoyed the recess. You certainly appeared to. And I hope everybody had an opportunity to look at the location plans as well as the building designs. So I have a couple of questions, and then we're going to move on to deliberation and decision. First of all, this is really a request to modify the approved plan, correct? Yeah. So the approved plan, and this is something that I recognize, but that was just given to me by one of the abutters, which is a page from the Whitman and Bingham Plan dated And this is Sheet 10 of 13, and it delineates, it has a detail where the recreation building is located. And it delineates the setback and then the 100-foot wetland buffer zone. And the building does appear to cross into the buffer zone.
It doesn't.
Okay. So the building that you're proposing under the new proposed position, and this is the Dillison Roy Plan, and I understand that nearly 20 years have passed between these two plans, appears to locate the building set back from the road, but in the same position, I believe. That's what you just explained to me.
Yep, but it's within the requirements. Dillison Roy made sure.
So would you state that there's been a change in the buffer zone?
No, but the building is outside the buffer zone. It is not in the buffer zone.
Okay. This is an issue that really belongs to CONSCOM, not to ZBA, but where, you know, we have to review the plans that are given to us. And this plan from Dillison Roy is a single sheet, and it's a detail. It is not the full set of plans that were given with the original application. And I'm, in order to, you know, bring this into consideration, I'm going to say, obviously, you're going to meet the CONSCOM requirements. You're going to have to go back to CONSCOM for review on this. I would want, if it crosses the buffers line, you're going to have to deal with it. If it doesn't, it needs to be confirmed because the discrepancy between the plans that I'm seeing here today and not enough detail in the new plan that was given to me to resolve that discrepancy.
Well, Madam Chairman, we have no problem as a condition, if you allow the matter, go forward, to, in the very short run, get confirmation either that we're not in the buffer or that we have to apply if we do for an NOI, and we're doing it. Okay? And so, you know, your comment, I appreciate, and I don't want to go down the path and find out, whoops, you know, we have an issue with the Conservation Commission, and we can't build the building, okay? But it is the buffer, so that gives me some, you know, feeling that we can do it. But I don't know when I look at plans, and I think we all know that are 20 years apart on different scales, that, okay? But the comment is taken well. We can go, I think we're at the Conservation.
Yep. We go to the Conservation for, to talk about the wetland rehabilitation, October 2nd.
We're going to be in the Conservation Commission next week, and we can reach out to them tomorrow, add that to the agenda, and they can decide how they want to handle it, whether they want the agent to go out, maybe we get the agent to go out before or after, and what we have to do with anything.
I'm actually trying to text Frank right now to see if he can jump on the ZBA meeting to verify that it is not in the buffer area.
I really do think you need an updated plan to show that, but
I agree.
That's, I think, needs to be confirmed and addressed.
We will submit to the Conservation Commission, as well as the Board of Appeals and Building Inspector, an updated plan, you know, that, you know, indicates, you know, where the buffer line is and the other lines that are, as well as all the setbacks, which I would like to submit to the Building Commissioner as soon as possible so he can verify what we've been claiming, that we meet all the setbacks. I don't want to go down this road, and then a month and a half from today, Building Commissioner says, oh, you don't meet that setback. I'd rather address it right now.
Okay.
Not that he will, but.
Well, I, this board can't address it without a plan.
No, you're correct.
And really, it should be addressed to CONSCOM.
No argument.
It's just an issue that I want to be resolved. And if CONSCOM does not agree that the building is located outside of the buffer zone, then I think you're going to need to come back here.
Well, can I ask you a question? Hypothetically, if it's within the buffer, but the Conservation Commission is, issues an order of conditions, haven't we resolved the issue?
Speaking as one board member, as long as there's an order of conditions and the order of condition is complied with.
Yes.
Yeah.
Obviously, okay.
But that, I think, will be subject for discussion during deliberations.
I'm looking for a relatively, I'm not telling you what you're going to do, but I would hope to come back here in about a month and fill in the blanks that you're bringing up, Conservation Commission, where we are with submitting the plans to the state, et cetera. You know, that's me, because I've been doing this a while, and I, we've been seeing needs to not fall in the cracks anymore. So I would ask to consider having us in about a month at a regularly scheduled meeting so we can report to you. We can tell you where we are with the state, Conservation Commission, anything else that occurs in the interim.
It's my understanding that one of the things lacking for the certificate of occupancy is an as-built site plan, and I would ask that you address that as well.
The as-built is supposed to be submitted when the community is completely finished.
Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner.
Ms. Hamburg, we've had this discussion many times.
Lots, absolutely.
Yes.
He's working on it for the two lots that we talked about, and I will get you the site plans for each one of those lots.
That's, I believe, what the Chair is asking about, and you had said earlier that you're waiting on zoning approval for those lots, and it's actually, we're waiting on those as-built plans.
I'm not waiting for zoning, I'm waiting for zoning approval for the occupancy permit for one of the permits, which is 180 Nigel Court, because it was added on to my conditions, and it was not on any of the others. It all of a sudden showed up on 180, and I understand that they were planning on holding the last one or one of them, but nobody ever specified which one would be held.
So it's the last of them that's being held, but I think the whole, we're waiting on those site plant, those as-built.
For the last two, but why isn't 180 been signed off yet? Because that was finished months ago.
I don't know. I don't.
Because the ZBA has added on there, it hasn't been signed off yet.
If you get me the record number for that, I can take a look. I have the permitting system open.
Commissioner, my understanding, and so is that, and that's what I would like to clear up, what Joanna's told me, and I only, she's telling me, is that there's a requirement that the ZBA sign off, just the way the Board of Health signs off the Conservation Commission. And that was, again, if that's wrong, then we should straighten it out, and if something else is missing, we should straighten that out.
Yeah, so it is a step that any case that goes in front of the ZBA, the Chair of the ZBA does have a sign-off on it. That is the case. But if you give me this, the specific record number, I can look it up and see if that is, in fact, the holdup, and we can address that today.
Well, you might find it quicker than I do if you have the records already open, but I am opening them.
There are one, multiple for each site, so.
So, Ms. Hamburg, Mr. Commissioner, I do want this resolved. I don't want to do it in this meeting, but I wanted to raise the issue so that it could be resolved. The other question, I think I asked you at the beginning, is there any willingness to still build the original building?
No.
And, you know, this is mostly comment, but not question. One of my concerns all along, we have this issue of balancing the needs of the residents versus the needs of the abutters, versus the needs of the city and the developer. And the design that you have submitted, it's substantially lesser than the original building. I sometimes change my mind, and should, because I try to keep an open mind based on input from the people who are most truly affected by everything. It would be my preference that there be a short period of rock grinding and the original building be built. That building will be there for a very long time and benefit not only the current residents, but also the future residents of this property. And a short period of time with rock grinding in order to accomplish that seems like a worthwhile exchange and appropriate road to go down. I think that there is, you know, there's a monetary issue on all sides here, that the new building, the newly designed building, will be less expensive to construct. It will be smaller. There may be less maintenance costs over time. There will certainly be less disturbance to the abutters for the smaller building.
I'm just confused. You would rather have the smaller building?
No, I would rather have the larger building. That's what I would rather have. But that would require the rock grinding. That would require the stick-built building, and that would require, according to what we've heard, a year of further construction. And we have a permit holder who is not willing to build it, so.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'm just confused, is that this building is, this is not argumentative at all, this building is bigger than the original
It is.
2006.
It is.
What I've heard is this building doesn't require any ledge removal. So I'm asking this really, truly as a question. If you're getting a bigger building, what's the discrepancy that you're concerned about between?
It's a bigger building than is on the plan, than that was required under the decision, because in the decision, we were trying to think of minimum dimensions. The stick-built plan that was shown was larger, more open, and had more space dedicated to the residents. That's why I think it was a better building for the residents than this one.
The stick building, and I wasn't here in 2006, but the stick building that you saw.
The stick building that we saw, the designs for this, two months ago.
You were here for that. The thing is, you want this building done quickly.
Yep.
It's not going to be done quickly, stick-built. We've already had tons of delays. You want me to get this done. I keep spending money trying to find ways to make it happen quickly. We are on the route now to do this. I need to just have a direction and move forward. I can't keep going back and forth and coming back to meetings for, just keep going around.
Sir, I will throw you out of this meeting if you make another comment.
We need to like.
I am quite serious about that. You will be silent, or you will leave.
We need to just move forward. This building can go up much quicker than the other one. My guys are used to building this. I don't have to hire outside contractors. It makes more sense. I should have done this originally. I held off on it because I thought it would take longer, but it won't. So this is the best option, and it's much more affordable for everybody involved.
To complete my thought
That's where I'm at.
With the input that I have received tonight from both residents and abutters. Still like to see a larger building, but I see the appeal of what the proposal is. That is really the extent of my questions. I think we're I think we're going to move to deliberations now. Is there anything that you would like to say before we go to deliberations?
Just I'd like the occupancy permits for the residents that want to move in. And I have no issue with putting up this building. I always intended on putting on a building. And it's going to go up. I don't see why someone else should have to suffer because it's taking time to put up the building. And a lot of the delays is just trying to get everybody on the same page.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Public hearing portion. One question.
Joanna, can I ask you one question?
Please.
Some of the people here in the audience approached me during the break. And Brian and I got together and we thought of a question to ask you. And I hope you don't say, "Is that horse dead yet?" But under a forecast, could you tell me how much extra is it going to cost in the maintenance cost once this building is built?
I don't have...
Do you do any forecasting?
I have not. Because we've got...
That's good. That's a good enough answer. Thank you.
Felix, it's building 152. B-24152. That's the permit. And that's the only one that has ZBA regulations on it.
Okay.
The only thing I would say, and I just, you know, is history has been well explained many, many times. It's a long process. You know, the only alternative is to get the building, you know, built. If we go into some other malaise, it's just not going to be, in the long run, to anybody's benefit, including the city, including the residents, including the applicant. You know, so I'm just looking, you know, light at the end of the tunnel. And, you know, again, you know, I understand what hasn't happened. I recognize that. We only got, my office only got involved in this a couple of years ago, which is long enough, to be honest. Okay, only a couple of years ago. All right, all right. But we are where we are at this point. And, you know, we just... You have to figure the best way to get this, you know, get this done. It's up to you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, just as a note, it's outside of deliberations. That C.O. has been issued. I just issued it.
Oh, you did it today?
I just issued it when you gave me the number.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, when you talk about stuff...
All right. We are going to move to deliberations on a modification of the special permit. All right. So I'm going to make a comment. I usually go to board members first. I'm going to make a comment here. And I really do appreciate anyone's input. As I said, I came here thinking that the right path forward was the larger stick-built building, even if it took some rock grinding to do it. And was willing to consider that. Given the feedback that we have had, we've certainly had a substantial number of residents here who appear not to have a concern about the diminished size of the building. I have also recognized that the length of time that it will take to give them this building will affect their enjoyment of it. That is true. The rock grinding would affect both the residents of the community and the abutters for whatever period of time. And as with everything in this project, I have an expectation that it's going to take longer than stated. And we would, if we allowed rock grinding for two weeks and they weren't done in two weeks, we would then have a request for four weeks that we would have to deal with. Because a constraint on time does not seem to be sufficient to have that happen. Given that, I am willing to consider the proposed building rather than the larger building, which would improve the time to being built. It would also decrease the impact on everyone else around this neighborhood. The permit holder has talked about, she's tried to comply, she's tried to comply. I, you know, agree. The December 31st of last year deadline that we set for a substantial amount of the work to be completed was met and did take some effort. I do not agree that everything has been done in this case to meet the July 1st deadline because the focus was on the buildings that were creating profit for the permit holder. This leaves me in the question of how to be assured that this will be completed and address the fact that deadlines that were set out were not met. Both of which, I think, need to be addressed. I understand that there was an issue with the ledge. But that happened when the building's foundations started to be dug, I believe, in April. And that is very late in the timeline to meet a July 1st completion date. And at that point, it was going to be a stick-built building, which will apparently take a year. And so they would have been over the deadline anyway. I am inclined to allow the modification. But I am not inclined to allow further certificates of occupancy to issue without meeting certain milestones. A milestone, you know, after discussion, might be installation of the foundation for the commission, for the recreation building. I think that's a good milestone at which to have an incentive to reach by tying it to the release of certificate of occupancy. I really don't like the fact that there have been so many modifications on this special permit. I do not like it. But we have had to do so to meet the changing conditions in front of us on this 20-year project. And so my concern is somewhat alleviated because of that. I believe that we need to hold this petitioner, this permit holder, to any conditions that would be imposed by Conscom in completion of those conditions. I do not really wish to see the permit holder back here every meeting until May. I really don't. I would prefer that we receive a written report from the permit holder, that we see them in December, and that we see them in May. I am very open to other comments from the board members, suggestions on how to handle the proposed modification. Mr. Reynolds.
I have a question for you, because I'm a little confused. First of all, good summary. I'm not going to forget about the good summary. But I want to go back to big building and small building. Because I just don't understand the point that you're driving at. Can you... Can you clear that up? I thought tonight's, I thought the proposal tonight was bigger and not smaller. But the way I heard you explain it, I thought you were saying what's proposed tonight is smaller.
So the 28 by 48 provision in the special permit decision, that was a measurement that the board arose at, I believe, from a doubling of the average size of the building on the lot. So the board, during its initial approval of the special permit, wanted to ensure that we would not have a building that was the same size as one of the homes, which is not appropriate for a community building. Larger space is needed. That was the measurement in there. A plan for the building was shown by the permit holder. That was a stick-built building. It was taller, so it was open and more spacious. Which, again, a taller stick-built building for a gathering space seemed more appropriate and a better amenity to the residents. I am comparing that to the current plan, which is the lower and a little bit smaller in length. Not from the decision, but from that prior stick-built building. However, given our decision says 28 by 48, I don't believe we have the ability to hold this permit holder to the larger design that she showed previously. If that makes sense to you, Mr. Reynolds.
Generally, yeah. Yeah, I'm just a little stuck on the piece of paper that's in front of me that says some certain dimensions. But point taken. Thank you. There is a, another item. I think it's condition number 25. It does mention two units versus one unit. Just again, in the point of clarity, have we moved from multiple units to a single unit, or...
The last meeting, it was changed to...
So this, I am looking at the May 14th decision issued. And condition 25 is no certificate of occupancy for the final, two final units on the right side of Nigel Court shall be issued until continues, conditions 19, 20, and 24 are satisfied. And those, that was the... That was, had to do with the conservation easement approval and recording. And then condition 26, that was just reciting changes. And I believe in the July meeting, we had another modification to hold further certificates of occupancy.
Okay.
Which is why I reference the fact that we have multiple changes.
Agreed.
That I don't care for.
So just to understand the playing field, where are we today with that point?
There are two unissued certificates of occupancy.
And are any being held by...
The last meeting, the hold was on, I believe, one. Would you... Yeah, one.
Was on one. So today, there still is a hold on one. Okay. I would, thank you for clarifying that. I would say that, on balance, the, what's before us tonight is a relocation. It seems dimensionally, perhaps not aesthetically, that the dimensions are not diminished. And it seems like the... Turning the building to the orientation being presented today avoids the disruption to the occupants of the community and their neighbors. So I think that would be something that would look favorably upon. I think the getting it done is important. I think that the board did a nice job tonight clearing up, what's the cost mean? Cost, again, just to say it again, is the maintenance cost, not the installation or the construction costs. So I think that it's a reasonable proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Burns.
I think I've got it pretty much squared in my mind. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Talbot, any comment for deliberations?
Not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
Madam Chair, thank you. I agree with your assessment. And I thank you for it. And I think we should move forward with the proposed 28 by 61 plan with the relocation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate your initial comments. I know we had the meeting with regards to the proposed change. After 20-plus years of tenants' expectations, they should have the best quality product. It's unfortunate that the additional increased costs over time, comments have been made that the folks that live in this area are going to have to absorb it. Because, again, I feel it was part of, you know, when they made purchase for this location, it was an accommodation that they anticipated. And now it's going to be a burden, potentially, financially. I think this is a good end-all to it. But time is money, and money is time. I don't feel that this is going to be, even if we gave it a timeline, that it's going to be met. I don't feel that if we impose fines, that the fines will be paid. And this needs to come to a conclusion. I would strongly recommend that no timeline be put on the construction and that we hold the final two occupancy permits until the project is done. And I think that's a way to just button this up.
Second one.
Can I have some discussion on the proposal to hold two occupancy permits as opposed to one? And you're proposing until full completion?
That's correct.
Rather than one being released midway? Any other comments on that?
It seems like a good way to get the project done. We have done absolutely nothing in the past to hold any feet to the fire. We have just been nice guys and said, "Well, yeah, you can do this, and you can do that." And all the time we get back is, "There's no problem here." There's a, you know, we go to school on excuses. So I think that by holding two back, we might get some action. Now, you know, that is understanding that some of the delays have been caused by the nature and topography of the land. However, it's still beat-dragging 20 years.
Mr. Reynolds, any comment?
Anything, Kim?
I think that sounds reasonable.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments before we move... Mr. Talbot?
I think having it contingent upon the foundation being put in would show good faith on both parts. And I think it would help free up some capital to maybe extract the project on their end.
I continue to think that's a good idea.
Is that sort of a milestone approach?
Like a milestone approach.
Maybe having two milestones instead of one milestone?
Yes. I prefer the milestone approach. Hold both, but release one upon the foundation milestone. Release the other upon full completion.
Madam Chair, just a brief comment.
Please.
This is an income-producing business. If you count the number of units times the income per unit, there is substantial funding for this to happen. And, again, the foundation gets put in, and then we have further holdbacks. I think we really need to bring this to a close and give them the opportunity to be able to do so and not have to keep coming back and forth every month, every two months, every three months.
I agree about cutting down the meetings. I'm also going to, I'm also going to state that where this is a modification, I believe a fee is owed to the city. This is a modification. This is a modification requested by the permit holder. I think there's a fee owed to the city for the modification.
Can I comment?
No. I believe the fee is $300. I believe it's the regular application fee. I think what we should do, Mr. McLaughlin, is vote on the condition. So... So, so the proposal is that the special permit be modified as follows. Number one, condition 14 shall be modified by removing the date of July 1st, 2024. Next, a condition 27 shall be added. And that condition will state that permit holder shall construct a recreation building in substantial accordance with the plans submitted, namely, the plan by Finelli Group, Inc., dated 9/18/24, and the plan by Dillison Roy, dated 3/27/24, with two amendments, dated 1/8/24 and 1/18/24.
Could you repeat the amendment dates? You said 1/18? That was after the original?
Yes, there are.
First date was 3/27.
It is, because there were a few different plans, a couple different plans dated 3/27, this is 3/27, and then the notations.
I get it, sorry. One was 1/18/24.
I don't think it's my eyesight.
Well, the amendment dates, what, when you read?
But I understand it's, the modifications are before the date of the plan.
And I apologize, Madam Rep.
Yeah, I don't, it's not otherwise labeled so that I can differentiate it. I am going to initial it, and I am also going to note that there is a handwritten notation stating new proposed petition, position on this plan, and this should be incorporated into the decision in the minutes. So, the condition I was on was constructed substantially in accordance with those plans. The plot plan depicting the entire development shall be amended to reflect the changes and the change planned submitted to the building department. Forty-five day timeline.
Forty-five day?
That's what she said.
From the date of this meeting. A as-built plan shall be submitted to the building department upon completion of the Condition 28, the proposed location change shall be submitted to, for review as to its location inside or outside the wetlands buffer zone, and the permit holder shall comply.
To ZBA?
The permit holder shall comply with any requirements of the Conservation Commission, and shall comply with any conditions, order of conditions that are issued. Can I take a straw vote on whether the amendments as proposed thus far are acceptable to the board? Anyone have an objection thus far?
No.
Okay. And the last condition I'm going to propose is that the certificates of occupancy on the final two units shall be held pending completion of the recreation building. One certificate shall be released upon completion of the inspection of the installed foundation for the recreation building. The final certificate of completion shall be released upon full completion of the project, all conditions having been met, and all inspections with city departments completed. Condition 29, permit holder shall submit a written report to the zoning board of appeals two business days prior to its meeting each month until the project has been completed.
Twenty-nine, two.
So that would be the Friday before the Tuesday meeting.
You only have one regular scheduled meeting a month? Okay, so it's two days before whatever that meeting is.
I think the correct way to do this would be to submit the motion, and then have Mr. McLaughlin propose the amendment, and then let us vote on the amendment, and if not, then we vote on the motion. So.
Maybe just so move on the?
We can so move.
So move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin, would you propose to amend that motion in any respect?
My original comment with regards to 29, this project needs to have completion, and I think the motivator is that we hold two units until the project is done. I think that's the fastest, best way for the project to be completed for the residents. Again, this started in 2006. As Mr. Byrne had mentioned at prior meetings, the big dig was completed quicker than this project.
So move.
I think it's a very fair recommendation.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Anyone want to speak on the amendment? Mr. Talbot, would you like to speak again? Mr. Reynolds, you can't vote, but would you like to speak? You could.
Move the question.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of the amendment to the proposed motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay. The amendment is three to two. That means the amendment fails, as we need a four-person vote, so we are back to the original motion. All those in favor of the original motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we have a three to two. That leaves us with an issue, because now we have no decision. Would you like to propose reconsideration on your motion?
I'd like the other board members to reconsider my original motion. And I can appreciate the board, obviously, and everybody's thoughts. Again, I just have to reiterate to the board, 2006, we've missed deadlines on a remand to the board in a list of 25 conditions, which had plenty of time. We, the finding of the ledge could have been done more expeditiously. The new building was supposed to be completed July 1st, and what's today's date?
September 24th, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, I just feel like time is money, money is time. This project most likely will get completed in a timely fashion with this condition added. I could be wrong.
I think the issue, Mr. McLaughlin, is we're all trying to see the future here, and we can only see the past. That's all we can see. If this board does not come to a decision, there's no modification. If we don't have a modification, then the permit holder is simply not in compliance. I don't feel that would move the project forward at all. I think we would then move to a more adversarial position that I don't really want to get into with the permit holder. All right. Then I am going to move for reconsideration of Mr. McLaughlin's motion to amend, and I need a second. So the motion is proposed by Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah, it was downvoted already once, right?
We need to, we need to have a motion to reconsider it in order to take it up again.
So move.
Do we have a second? Thank you.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of passing the motion as amended by Mr. McLaughlin, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
Nay.
All right. So that is passed as amended, which means that both certificates of occupancy will be held until completion of the project. As I said in the conditions, I believe a written report monthly would be preferable to having the permit holder back here every month. I don't want to waste anybody's time. And I think this modification should be scheduled for review at the election of the permit holder upon, for review of completion of the project. So that means the permit holder will notify the ZBA when it's ready to present a completed project for review. Nevertheless, I would, the condition does include the written reports each month. All right? All right, this matter is concluded. I'm going to conclude the matter, and then if we want to take a two-minute recess, I will take some questions.
I just want, just, my office, my act and office address is going to change after the first of the year. It's 68 Main Street now, okay? And I let the board know, but you have my email address, okay? If the board also could send me the minutes or this decision.
Okay.
All right? Okay? But my act and office address will change. Okay?
Thank you, counsel.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, everybody who showed up today to participate. We appreciate your participation. This matter is concluded. We are now going to go to the second item on the agenda, and I appreciate everyone's patience today in waiting for the first matter to be concluded. This is ZBA 24-28. This is John Lee, 21 Market Street. This is a request for a special permit under section 181.335 and section 181.94 of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to reinstate a vacant or abandoned non-conforming mixed-use structure, changing the use to another non-conforming, less detrimental use as a single-family dwelling pursuant to section 181.94 located in the residential C district. Gentlemen, welcome to the meeting. I am sorry that it is 8:45, and I'm also sorry that I'm going to pause for Mr. Commissioner to make a statement.
So, thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to make a statement before the, before the hearing is opened. And I'm intentionally asking for it before the hearing is open, because I was not aware, for some reason, that, that the proposal was now to make it a single-family dwelling, which, as, as the chair knows, I have the administrative ability to do without it having to go in front of the zoning board of appeals pursuant to, pursuant to the, pursuant to the zoning ordinance for a single or two-family dwelling, in order to do that for an existing structure. That, that as the board knows, as long as they're updating the structure, renovating, renovating the structure, bringing it up to code, and not changing the number of parking spaces that are there, I have that ability to do administratively.
That's fair.
That was not brought to my attention before this meeting, so I may ask the applicants, and I thank Counselor Cruz for bringing it up to me just as the meeting, as the meeting was started, we're checking in, and I maybe ask the applicants for, or the chair, for a two-minute recess for the applicants to discuss whether they want to ask for a continuance on this again, so that they can discuss this with me as a sidebar to see if we can come to a resolution and potentially have it taken off of this board's docket.
All right, two-minute recess.
Quick question that may help? Quick question that may help?
All right. Thank you, everyone, for returning after our extended absence. So again, we have before us, sorry, I'm looking for the doc, the number. ZBA twenty-four dash twenty-eight, twenty-one Market Street. It is my understanding that the applicant would like to continue the hearing until the next month's hearing date, which is October eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Show moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Sir, I will need you to come up and sign this extension agreement, if you would. And the building department will be happy to email you a copy of the agreement tomorrow. Thank you. Yes, please. All right, thank you, sir. All right. We will see you next month unless you are otherwise, unless you're otherwise able to resolve without our assistance. Okay? Good luck to all of you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Counselor Cruz, thank you for waiting for this matter to be concluded. Next matter on the agenda is ZBA twenty-two thirty-three dash fifteen. This is Nadell Antonio, three forty-eight Elm Street. This is the continued hearing on a special permit under section one eighty-one point three-three-two of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to reinstate a vacant or abandoned non-conforming mixed-use structure, changing the use to another non-conforming, less detrimental use as a duplex pursuant to section one eighty-one point nine-four located in the residential C district. Mr. Antonio, welcome back to the meeting.
Thanks for having me. Good evening. Nadell Antonio from Fitchburg, Mass.
All right. So at our last meeting, we, you had presented the plan to us and there was comment that the board made that it had some concerns with the plan. Why don't you let us know where, where you are on the plan that you would like to present to the board?
I would love to make it a two-family, how it is. I have talked to the architect and if Plan B to make this happen, we have to remove ten feet from the front of the house. We can do that and put it on print. That way we have more space on the front. We will not be adding any more space on the back or on the side. Just remove in ten feet from the front of the building so it lines up with the other property on the right of it.
Okay. One of the issues that we talked about, you have the parking located on another lot. I had quested, you have bollards in front of the meters, I think?
Currently, yes, which if I, on the parking spot or on the property?
No, the, the bollards in front of meters.
Yes, those will be removed.
Okay.
That will all be green area if we push that back ten feet, if I have to.
So it would be push that ten feet, create a green area?
That is correct.
Would it be a cantilever the building over that or just simply push it all back?
That would be great, but I'm sure it's not going to get approved, so I don't mind pushing, removing ten feet all the way up.
Okay.
To go back.
All right. Would you still keep the former steam rooms on the second floor in the back?
The second floor, correct. The steam rooms in the back will be converted into bathrooms and closets.
Okay, and that is without taking down the current structure of those building, it is using the current structure?
Correct.
Back there. Do you have any modifications to the plan that was presented in writing?
I do have a new print showing the ten feet remove if we have to go that route to get this approved. It's not a hundred percent, a hundred percent, because I don't want to spend all the money, but I do have it printed saying, here's back ten feet and now the rooms will be smaller due to that.
So a conceptual plan?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So that is something that must be new because I do not see it in my pack?
That is correct. I got it this morning. Like I said, it was more like a Plan B. If I have to make a big change on this property to make this work, then I will, I'll, I'll take off ten feet. That's no problem and from the front, that way we have more space.
Okay. So ten feet would, would allow green space. It would not be sufficient to allow another parking space, I don't think. Because we need eighteen feet and I can't imagine how you would do anything other than?
And the buffer.
Full street, and the buffer. Thank you, Mr. Cruz, for the?
Yeah, the buffer, if I'm not mistaken, would be three feet maybe and then the eighteen feet. I don't think I meet twenty-one feet to the street, but I think I do meet eighteen to the street even when I push that back to ten. I don't intend to put any park in there. I intend to use it on the lot. If I can maneuver a way in the future to add park in there, hallelujah, why not? Now we'll have an empty lot that I can potentially build on in the future. You know, I would love that, you know, but right now what the print I have showing is that parking lot for that property.
Okay. Do you have sufficient copies to allow the board to see it?
I should.
And I'm just going to remind you that if, if we look at the plan, we have to keep that, that copy of the plan?
Well, yeah, definitely.
For the minutes. Thank you.
Which is pretty much the same layout, the same everything as what I sent you guys before. It's just the rooms are a little smaller to remove ten feet from the front of the building.
Am I seeing that there are a set of stairs coming down in the front of the building?
That is correct. There was, there was always stairs going up, how it was now, and there was always a door going to the ground level. Not basement, it's not basement, it's a ground level floor.
So the page that I'm looking at is labeled proposed basement and what I see is mechanical storage in the back and then it's labeled bonus area, so not a living space?
That is correct. And maybe they should have put basement because it's not on the ground, is street level. So I mean, it should be first floor, but that is street level.
How many bedrooms? Is there any modification to the prior proposal, still, still three?
We have three bedrooms, a two-and-a-half baths, or three baths. It's the only change that we have, like we move in ten feet from entire, from the front of face of the house, which will bring the bedroom smaller and the living room a little smaller.
So everything is shrunk? You haven't taken it from one specific?
That is correct. I prefer not to, but if I have to get this approved to get this project going, then I don't mind doing that.
Okay. So I assume since you got this this morning, this has not been reviewed by the building department?
He has not seen it, no. I wanted to, yeah. Every time we talk to him, he wants to wait until we get anything from you guys first before, and I don't blame him. I don't want to put stuff on him until we talk first, you know?
Yeah, I don't want to put you to the trouble of having a whole plan drawn.
Yeah.
Prior to the concept. But at some point, obviously, when this concept is settled, the whole plan will need to be?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Has everybody looked down that side?
Yes.
Okay. You guys are set. Where are the remaining pages? Where are the other pages of the plan? There was a set that was passed down to you.
There was a couple of sets. He has one.
I think it's four pages per, so eight.
All mine, all here?
Oh, fold it up. I have it, sir. Thank you. The bedrooms are on the top floor, right? And this is, the first floor has the kitchens. There is an office in the back. It looks like you are in fact modifying the steam rooms because the office is bigger.
Correct. So modified, so all the steam rooms have, have eight doors in the front and he's going to close them up. All the inside and between us are open. I'm just going to close them up with wood in the front. I think this is the best solution I can come up with to make something, looking around other properties, what can make this happen is if I re, if I have to remove it, I have to remove it to make this go.
And can I ask, again, there was a concern about the foundation. Can you tell us about, there are holes on the left-hand side and compromised concrete on the left-hand side of the foundation. Would that be removed with this ten feet being?
It should be, yeah. Any other holes that there is in the foundation walls around, we're going to fix before we cover, which is not a big deal, but those are foundation walls. The front is where the, it looks the worst and that will be removed, the ten feet.
Okay. And do you have, or will you be obtaining any engineering on ensuring that the structure of that, again, compromised foundation is sufficient to withstand the weights it requires?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, the engineer that did the prints should have all the information. He went there and, I mean, what was there before was more concrete and it was more heavier than what we're proposing now. But I can get you whatever you want to make it happy through, make this.
Well, I think at, at a minimum, we would want something from an engineer who has been on site as opposed to one who has not examined the building.
Oh, yeah, my, the, the prints that originally came in, he's also an engineer and he came out. He should have all the information. I can get you that, yeah.
Okay. When you see if we have any public comment, Mr. Commissioner has not seen these prints at all and I, I hesitate to ask for an opinion based on a moment's glance. Have you, so you still have a budget for this project, correct?
Correct.
And does that encapsulate all of the work that you're proposing as well as the stretch energy code that will be, need to be?
Yeah, actually worked out perfect. If we move in the ten feet, save me money on labor, even though I'm going to spend it on insulation and other things, but, so works out perfect.
Okay. And you have the funding set aside?
Yeah, I actually just put some money in my account in case someone asks me for, to see my bank account. I can show you guys if you need to, just let me know.
I, I don't really like asking people about finances, but it's one of the things that we're trying to?
I am all, if you want me, I can get up and I can show you. I am all, if you want me, I can get up and I can show you my bank accounts or one of them.
And what I'm really more interested in order to understand what that number means is the proposed budget for construction and the scope of work. So in other words, what are you going to do? What is it going to cost that helps us understand that you have enough money in the budget to complete the work?
Okay, I don't have nothing written down, a hundred percent I can, that I can show you, but I can show you one of my bank accounts and you can see three figures on it, if it makes you guys happy, you know?
And on the separate lot where you're proposing to construct the parking required, have you produced a plan that shows the engineering requirements for what you're going to do to that granite wall?
I did submit a certified plot plan to you guys. I'm not sure what I thought about the wall, but I can actually, it'll be the same guy for the foundation. I can have him write something up on that wall. We have no intentions of moving the wall, but let's see what he wrote. I don't think you should have it as well, but I'll have to check. Give me one second. I've got a certified plot plan for that lot that I've submitted before.
Thank you, sir.
I don't think nothing on there shows to do anything with that wall, but I can have him, he's going to go for the foundation. At three forty, I can have him write something up if you want about that wall.
I think on the right-hand side, this states, this is looking at a shea wall system, typical wall section. And so I think it provides some notes, but I would agree that there needs to be a little more detail on it.
Yeah, I'm going to have him, we're going to blow that up to do the work, make it bigger because it's very small, everything in there.
Have you approached DPW yet about the curb cut that will be needed?
I have not. The, I'm assuming there used to be a property there before because there is a curb cut already. We're going to try our best to use that curb cut that's there or add to it to make it a little bigger to what he wants, but there is already a curb cut there. It's just covered right now with granite, if I'm not mistaken, or something like that. It's covered with something, but there is a curb cut there from before.
Dialogue in my head is going, the granite is the curb, so if there's granite there, there's a curb there. So how can there be granite covering?
So maybe the granite is, yeah, maybe the granite is behind, I'm not sure, I remember seeing granite, but there is a curb cut there.
Okay.
I don't know if I have a, I don't think I...
That's okay, that's okay.
I may have, yeah, I can check if I have.
Okay. But just be aware that any, if there is anything that's a curb cut, it's going to be required.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, definitely. I can't cut it myself. I'll definitely approach them.
Because I'm looking at this, unfortunately, I have to keep it?
Yeah, keep it.
For the minutes. I'm going to see if there's any public comment on this, on this matter. I don't think there is. Is there any person present who would like to make a comment on or against this case? Seeing none and seeing zero persons online. I am going to go to board members for questions.
Can I go up for one second? I found an actual picture that I think it shows a curb cut.
Oh, great. Thank you.
I think that's a curb cut, right? I just got to make sure it lines up with what my survey I wrote down.
I think that is definitely an on-the-ground interpretation is going to have to be... It looks like there might be a depression in one.
It's definitely a curb cut. There's definitely, I'm pretty sure there used to be a property there and cars used to go in there. But I could definitely pull a permit and get that addressed.
All right. Can you pass those so the other board members can see and then we'll go to the next slide? Mr. Reynolds, would you like to ask any questions? Mr. Burns, do you have any questions for this applicant? No. Mr. Talbot, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, what drove the ten-foot reduction in the building? Was that based on the foundation evaluation or?
Not at all. I'm just trying to find a way to get this approved and I'm trying to think what could maybe make you guys happier, you know, because I know that it is close to the road. I know there was bollards before and the property was there, so I'm trying to think of different ways. That way I don't keep coming and coming, you know? And like you guys said before, time is money, money is time. I mean, I'd rather not. I'd rather have a bigger unit.
Yeah.
You know, I would prefer, I would prefer to not, but if this is going to make it happen, I have no choice. I want to move forward.
Mr. Gallagher, any questions for the applicant?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. How big is the lot that's set aside for parking?
Square footage wise, let's see, it says twenty-seven seventy-five square feet, hundred. So two thousand seven hundred seventy-five. Right now he is showing one, two, three, four, five parking spots, which I'm looking to see if I can change that to eight in the future. I don't know yet. We'll see, but he's showing five. He shows a buffer there for the snow and he's showing five for the property.
Okay. And with the reduction of ten feet on the foundation, what will your setback be?
On the front?
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, it'll be eighteen feet to the sidewalk.
Going in, eighteen-foot setback. How does that align with the other buildings on the street reduction?
If I move back, I'll be in line with the property on the right.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll be in line with, I should be a little shorter than them. But there's other properties along the line that are more forward.
Right. I was at the site today and I noticed the back of the foundation seems to have a lot of deterioration where it's kind of crumbling at the bottom. There's also some windows on the back that look like they were filled in over time with cinder blocks. What is the plan to improve that?
Once I have my engineer look at the foundation, see if any repairs he wants to do, I'll let you know what we're going to do about that. The windows, I wasn't going to touch because I wasn't going to open anything up except for doors back there.
I was thinking more along the lines of a skim coat so that you're not actually seeing the old cinder blocks, you know, in the old formation.
Outside or inside?
Outside.
Although it'll be covered.
That's my question.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Everything will be covered, yeah. Once everything is correctly done, everything will be covered, yeah. We won't see no foundation.
So are you going to skim coat the entire foundation?
That is correct, yeah. We're first going to do any repair we have to to fill any cracks and then we're going to skim coat it and then we cover it.
Okay.
We actually put an insulation board outside.
Well, thank you for saying that because that changes my perception of what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've visited the site at least six times. In early on, when the applicant first came before us, you know, we, the board said that we looked favorably upon the redevelopment of the property and that, you know, we would entertain it two units and I'm absolutely on board. But after visiting it at least six times, we're trying to rebuild Stonehenge. It's a mismatch of old foundation. It's an obsolete design. I would definitely entertain a properly designed project. We've, over the years, approved condominiums on the road and also reduction in setbacks, variances for small, single-family homes and the neighborhood has started to take shape. I don't find that trying to rehabilitate what is left is good for the city and for the future of the neighborhood, but absolutely in favor of a good plan, well-thought plan and a proper plan for two units on that property. So I don't want to really waste too much time asking for redesigns and, you know, again, it's... We're trying to put a Band-Aid on this thing and make it work. I think that better setbacks could be used, even a plan where there was parking underneath that is kind of in keeping with some of the other condominiums. So certainly...
Excuse me, but there's not a lot of property there that have parking.
So again, definitely in favor and open to a good plan. I don't think this is a good path for the city to be going down, redeveloping this old remnant of a structure. Thank you.
So there was a statement made by Mr. McLaughlin regarding parking underneath. That is something that I certainly think would be beneficial to this building. It would require, I think, so you have this bonus area in the basement that is twenty-four by twenty-three on each side, which seems to be sufficient space for at least one parking space underneath each building. Is that something that you would be open to including in your plan?
I wasn't planning to. I mean, that's the whole reason why I spent money and bought a plot of land. If I wouldn't have known that was the case, I wouldn't have spent what I spent to buy the land. You know, it's the whole reason why I have the land. If it's something that, hey, the only way you're going to get this building to go if you do this. If I have no choice, I have no choice. I'd rather not, you know? I'd rather not. I bought the land for that reason. You know, I read your zoning ordinance. I have one hundred and seventy-six pages that I read through every day and I try to find different ways and it says that a lot is permitted parking a hundred feet or whatever it is from there, if you guys... So that's why, you know, I plan to. If I have no choice and if I could put parking under it, that could be an option. That being said, then the first floor and second floor, maybe I can leave bump out. Maybe I can put the cars on there, but it's still going to be close to the road. You know, so for me to get the car in there, I might have to cut more of the house off. You know, why would I if I have a parking spot that I can provide for the tenants, you know? I know it looks very ugly right now because of the way it looks, but all that can be fixed and look made pretty. You know, I can make it match whatever is there next door and across the street. I can change the roof line if you want, so it's not flat and it's angled down and it looks like a single family, you know? There's different things that we can do to make this look better if you want. I mean, like I said, right now it doesn't look good. You know, it does not, I understand that, but that can all, outside stuff can be made pretty. That's no problem, you know?
Can I ask, have you evaluated what the cost of, the additional cost of tearing down the existing foundation and reconstructing would add to your project?
Over eighty grand. The foundation is good. If I have somebody here that tells me that the foundation is good, why would I mess with the foundation?
Is that any different documentation than you provided before?
I don't have, no, I'm just saying, yes, in general, if I have something saying from a professional that does foundation, that the foundation is good, why would I mess with it? You know, I can't tell him no by the looks, I'm not a professional foundation. But this person is and he tells me it is, why would I mess with it? You know, I, the foundation that's there right now is huge, it's concrete. Even the cracks that it has, it's still huge, it's wide. It used to be a concrete building on top of that, more concrete stuff on it. A lot of weight was on that building and the weight that I'm putting on now is not as much as what I had before that we demoed already. I understand what he's saying, I understand. I try to see things two different ways. You have to, you can't see it one way. And also I see it both different ways. I understand what he's saying, but I don't, I don't agree with it. You know, I don't agree with it. I think by me going back ten feet, I think that's great. Why not? You know, you can go down that street and you can find all those houses that don't have parking and those lots have been there, available and no one bought them and did nothing with them. And I was able to buy them to provide parking to come to this meeting, you know? In the future, if I can make that deeper, I would love to. That I can come here and build another house on that lot. Why not? It only makes sense, but for right now to get the project going, I would love to just move the ten feet. I'll make it look pretty outside, whatever aquariums you want, and I'll do the parking.
I'm going to take a moment to ask a question of the commissioner. So the proposal would be that there would, there would be a cut to the existing concrete foundation in order to bring the building back. This board is really not in possession of the expertise to determine whether or not that creates a structurally downed building or not. I realize that this board has the ability to require that the applicant pay for an independent consultant to render an opinion on the plan. It's something that usually is only done with larger projects. Mr. Commissioner, do you have any suggestion on this issue?
I think that this is a two-family house. He is trying very hard to hear everything that this board has asked of him and willing to take as much feedback as is possible and feasible and practicable for this. I can say that I've never, unless, oh, I can't say never, but I can't think of the last time I heard a zoning board asking to cut back on an existing foundation as a condition of a special permit to build a two-family house.
Question?
Do you have, do you have any comment on really what I've asked, which is a source to obtain some expertise on the structural integrity of what he's proposing?
So if the board chooses to make that a requirement, he will have to provide us that, he will have to provide us documentation from a licensed professional, a registered design professional as part of the Appendix J requirements for the two-family code that says that the new, the new foundation does meet all of the, does meet all of the loads. But I just need to reiterate that I can't think of the last time that I've seen that for a two-family house going in where an existing structure.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Well, just for clarification, the applicant has proposed moving the foundation back ten feet, not the board.
But I thought the board is asking for him to rip out the foundation because it's ugly.
I'd rather not move it. I would leave it where it is.
Secondly, secondly, Mr. Commissioner, in your expertise, because you've seen a lot of construction, I can almost guarantee that nobody can show this board where a structure, a leftover remnant of a structure like that has been allowed to be redeveloped. I would love to see that. And this is back to, we need to raise our bar and raise our standards and make better neighborhoods and not just put lipstick on a pig. And we've worked hard to make that neighborhood a viable neighborhood again and the city has done a good job with the redevelopment because it's been done proper.
But we're also in an affordable housing crisis and we're talking about the foundation. He's still going to be providing the framing and the structural, the structural guts of the house. We're talking about the foundation and I have seen plenty of buildings that have been built in my many years as a, as a building official where the foundation has remained.
We're talking foundation. This is not a foundation.
This is a foundation at its core.
This is remnants of an old steam bath building that we're just going to try to wrap.
An old steam bath building that was part of this community.
That's right. That's right.
And held some significance to this community.
Absolutely.
And, and he is built, and he is building something over it to, to, to expand on it, provide housing that if he were to cut this down, rip this out, which you saw how long it took him to get to where he is because of how, how strong the foundation is existing, that it's, that it's going to cause undue cost. He said, he's priced it out at approximately $80,000 additional. That, that is going to be passed down to the future buyers of the, of the property, and it's going to add to the affordability crisis in Pittsburgh.
And we all know that sometimes people make bad investments, but the owner should not be put on this board to compromise a quality project.
What is, what is the charge of this board?
In allowing any type of development because of a, a, you know, housing crisis.
But, but what is the charge of this board? Is it beautification or is it public health, safety, welfare, and continuing community standards?
Would you like me to read the zoning, the intent?
All right.
If you'd like, Mr. Commissioner.
No. I, I, I think this is enough. We are having a debate of ideas instead of having a debate of the matter which is before us, and that's what's on the zoning board of agenda.
Yeah, I don't think I'm putting lipstick on the pig or however you want to call it. If someone is telling me that the foundation is good and can be built on, I don't understand why we cannot use it, you know?
So to very gently put it, the board has had experience with people stamping things that really are just a stamp. And that's, and that's kind of one of the issues I think that the board faces.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't think that should be.
Which is not, it's, it's not particularly your issue.
Yeah.
It's a generalized issue. The, where the building was used as a steam bath for many years, and again, I'm going to encourage you to remember that this board is consisting mostly of laypeople with the exception of Mr. Talbot, who is in the construction industry. We look at this and it's, it's in cracked, it's in disrepair, there are holes. We think about all of the moisture that has been in the building over the years, and we wonder whether that affects the integrity of even the concrete in that building. Mr. Commissioner has raised a good point in that it took you a very long time to deconstruct any of the concrete because of the strength involved in the concrete. And my question was, is there any way that we can have any kind of independent certification and review of what you would need to present, which I think is, again, an engineered opinion?
Yeah, I mean,
That the repair can be done and be structurally sound.
I should be able to. I don't see why not. That being said, then I won't want to move it back 10 feet if I don't have to.
Yeah.
You know, if my, if my engineer guy say, hey, you know, this is good to build on, why would I move it back? I brought that as an option, which I think will be healthier for the board and will look better. But if that's the case, then I want to leave it how it is.
From my perspective, it's part of the difficulty where the board is offering ideas, because we're five or six members that have different ideas. You know, so I, I do recall one of the comments being made that if there were some green space in front, that would be an improvement.
That, that is correct. And that's why I thought of, hey, you know what? I'm going to shrink everything down 10 feet and hopefully that will make them happy, you know? And like I said, I know the foundation does not look healthy. From looking at it right now, I know it is. Look what it was on, you know? So, I mean, I can get to some paperwork, I can submit the plans, however you want to work it out, I would just like to move forward and get this framed and billed, you know? And I can get you all the documentation that you need.
So, Mr. Commissioner, would the DPW be able to review the opinion that would be offered as to the integrity of the wall?
I mean, I'm able to review it if it's done by a licensed, registered design professional.
I, and I apologize for not, this is not a questioning of your credentials, it's an understanding of your expertise. I, I would like someone who could have written the letter themselves to review it. Does that make sense?
I, I recognize that. It's outside of the scope and liability of the, of the city engineer to, to do that. But that being said, as, if it's written by a reg, design professional, it is within my scope and my licensure to review those, to review those documents. And I've reviewed much, much more complex ones than that.
Question for clarification?
Go ahead.
What's the present setback of the property now from the city line, not the curb?
If you look at the certified plot plan of how it is, but if I'm not mistaken, I think it's three and a half feet, I think, from the, from the street side, not from the curb, from the
From the city property?
Yeah.
Not the curb?
Yeah, I think it's three and a half feet if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. And just for clarification, you're proposing to move the foundation back another 10 feet, so we'll have 13 and a half feet?
When I measured, it was 18 feet, to be exact. Let me see, maybe I'm, maybe I'm looking at something wrong.
So you're going to move it back 15 feet?
Huh? I'm going to move it back 10 feet. I'm going to remove 10 feet of foundation.
Okay.
Or new foundation on the front
Okay.
Of the structure. It's not going to be hanging on the air.
If you have three and a half feet now, and you move it back 10
I understand what you're saying.
That's going to be 13 and a half.
Correct. But if I'm not mistaken, it's 18 feet. Maybe I'm not reading it. Gosh, will you?
Might have to go from the city line.
Certified plot plan. We can see over here that it's three and a half feet from the property line itself, which is shown to be on the curb. And then measure from the front here to what I think it is, 18 feet. So I guess I'm adding, adding the sidewalk to it. You can see here is more space.
Okay. So if you could just help us with proper dimensions, exclude city land. So is the setback from the city land to the front of the building, is that two and a half feet now?
I think it's two and a half feet on one side and three and a half feet on the other side.
Okay.
Now, the city land, I think it's
So you're going to, you're going to take down another 10 feet, which will give you 13 and a half on one side, and am I missing something?
Twelve and a half on the other.
I think I have another
I'm just trying to understand math. Three and a half plus 10 is 13 and a half. How do we get to 18?
I think I maybe gave you the
He's measuring from the curb in one spot and city line in another, in another.
Yeah, it doesn't sit squared. But I measure it being 18 feet including the sidewalk.
No, don't want to include the sidewalk. That's city property.
Okay, so that was three and a half feet, so it'll be 15 feet from the, after that, back.
Okay. I'll give you this back. That's what, I just want some clarification. If we approve a plan, what are we approving?
Yes, I agree.
Are we looking at the 9-1-20-21 plan?
This was just a certified plot plan of 348, 9-1-20-21. That is correct.
Okay, and that was by PFS Land Surveying?
Yep.
And Grove Land. Did they come out to the property?
They, they didn't come out. I called them and they already had it made from before, from the old owner. So I've got a copy from the old owner. He hired them. I only hired the one for the lot down the street.
Did they come to view the property down the street, or did they do an armchair parking plan?
No, they came out.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can see that surveyor that I use for all my properties, Stephen, he's very good. He's, Stefan, he's very descriptive. If you can look at the paper I gave you, he has, he's very good. The only problem about him is that it's too tight. He needs to blow it up. But if you look in there, very descriptive. His knowledge is very good.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't know what my other options would be. I know that from what I read before on the zoning paperwork, I can go back and build it however, how it was before. You know, I can, I, I could do that, and I don't have to move it back 10 feet and just build a structure that was, how it was before, which I don't want to do that, you know? I want to make it right, you know?
And, and I don't want to sit here and have different recommendations come out to you, and then you make more plans, and then we review them, and then, you know, it's, I, I think what the board needs to do, taking the concept that you've presented, which is that the front line of the building will be set back 10 feet from its existing location. That it would be a two-family structure, that all parking would be located on a separate lot within, I think, 300 feet, right?
Correct.
Of the structure. Certainly, I would want to see more, more definitive plans before things move forward, but I think you need a decision one way or the other on the concept that you've presented so that you can have some clarity with this property. Is there any other question a board member wants to ask before we move to deliberation? Is there anything you want to say before we move to deliberation?
I appreciate whatever you guys can do for me. I mean, I would love to just make it a two-family and get all my approvals. I don't, I don't, I don't know. I've seen worse properties. I know this looks bad, but I've seen worse properties without no parking. I can always, I think, like I said, I think I guess my Plan C will be to put it back how it was.
What is your construction timeline from permitting?
No more than a year. I can frame that up in a month or two. I can weather title it right away. You know, I can do other trades. Like, no more, in a year, I can have that property done.
And I, I'm pretty sure all your construction vehicles will need to be parked on the street there. Are you going to have
Well, I'm, I'm also start the lot, so we're going to start putting stuff on the lot, you know?
You mean in the back?
No, in the parking lot that we want.
Oh, on the other lot?
Oh, yeah. I'll get that rolling at the same time, you know? We're going to get, remove all the concrete, granite stuff that's there, you know it.
Okay. Thank you.
Is, is the lot part of the project?
It would have to be part of the project. Otherwise, there's
You have a plan submitted for the lot?
We have a plan submitted for the lot. And we just took it in, and I believe it's what was passed down.
I try to clean up the property best I can. I go to the lot and cut the lawn like we talked to before.
I
Just trying to keep, just trying to keep up with it, you know? But sometimes neighbors still trash and we try to fix the finest when we can when we go, you know? So we try to keep up with it, but
No, I did see that you cut down the overgrowth. And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
The overgrowth was quite substantial.
Huh?
The overgrowth was substantial.
It's, oh, yeah, it grows quick. So the old owner there, very nice guy, he put different kind of plants there before, and they grow very fast.
So I'm delaying because I want to make sure whether or not we have any more questions before we move to deliberation. What's the name of the, I believe, architect on the plans that you submitted today?
So they call Flow Design from Boston. And then Stefan is my certified engineer. He's very good. That's the copy that you have.
Can I see that first?
Can I ask the Commissioner for a second?
Go ahead and ask a question.
Commissioner? Is there a density per apartment? Like, if you've got a three-bedroom apartment, it's got to be such a, such a big place before there's three, four, five, six people living in it. Is there any?
Yes. Yes, it's established under the Building Code and the State Sanitary Code. So it's
Did you hear?
What? No, it's not in the zoning ordinance. It's, it's Building Code set. So it's 70 square feet for the first occupant.
Say again?
70 square feet for the first occupant and 50 square feet per occupant beyond that. And there is multiple other requirements. There's a minimum of 150 square feet for the, for the first occupant for the total space. So there's a number, a number of requirements, both under the Building Code and the State Sanitary Code.
Thank you.
So the bedrooms in here, each side has two that are about, so one side is 14 by 11 and a half, the other side has two that are almost 15 by 11 and a half. The master bedroom on each side is 14 by 12 by 8. So I think we're within the provisions. At a very brief length. Mr. Commissioner, we don't have any EV parking requi, requirement on this structure, right?
So the new lot requires a certain percentage under the Energy Code to be EV-ready. The number's slipping my mind right now, but I can pull it up really quickly.
I do have an extra parking spot there now. I got five.
So let me just get the EV-ready requirements. Massachusetts.
But there's no way I'd be able to get some electrical out there.
Yeah, on the separate lot, it would, you'd have to start a service there. But the Energy Code is something that we don't have, have control over here. It's a state mandate.
Yeah, no, I mean
It says, it says for a two-family house, at least one 50-amp branch circuit per dwelling unit.
So two circuits?
Two circuits.
And those would really only be available on the structure lot? Well, or you'd have to put service out on the separate lot?
Well, it's for, for the spots for that structure.
Yeah.
So if there are no spots on the, on the structure, and they're all on the off-site, then that actually, it depends on what the eventual use of off-site lot is, because if it's going to serve more than just a one- and two-family home, then 20% of the spots have to be, have to be EV-ready.
I think the entire purpose of the site is for parking on this particular, for this particular structure. So I think, I, I think the conclusion
So I, I would, I would figure that out with, with him when we're at, because that's part of our permitting process, our standard permitting process anyway. That we should figure that out as a planner.
I can't be the first one that's, this has happened, that's building a two-family in town, am I?
No.
Okay.
No. Having an off-site parking lot?
Yeah, I can go back on records and see from
All right. If we're done with questions, then I'm going to move us to deliberations. Okay? All right? Without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. So I am looking for discussion on the allowance or non-allowance of the requested special permit. And I think there are a number of clarifications that we would need, obviously, to move the permitting forward, which would include a more developed plan than is presented to us here. That being said, I think this applicant needs some clarity on what the board's gonna do. Mr. McLaughlin has made a, a very correct point on quality of construction being a necessary element in the city. And I think that were the board to allow this, they would need to be a very high standard on the quality of construction that was used, the verification of the structural integrity of the project in a manner that the board could place some confidence in. And... I don't disagree that taking the property down, taking the foundation down and starting over again would be a way that the board could have more confidence, because we would know about the method of construction. And I, and I really have strongly considered Mr. McLaughlin's opinion on it, because I know, as with all of his opinions, they are very heartfelt, and they come from a real passion for the improvement of this city. I do think there's a way for this project to move forward without taking down the whole foundation. The ability to move it back 10 feet, I think, does take down the portion that I thought was really structurally questionable.
Can I say something real quick?
No, no, because in deliberations, only board members may speak. It's part of the rules of the meeting. I would prefer to see the rooms taken down at the back, the former steam rooms. I don't think... I, I think the former steam rooms particularly have a lot of issues associated with their prior use that would speak to replacement being an improvement over retention. I am, I, like Mr. McLaughlin, I think it would be great if there were under, under the building parking on the ground floor for one spot on each side. I think that would be a great improvement to the design, but also having the green space in front is a great improvement to the design, because it was without any prior to that. I, I am thinking that there would be a number of conditions that I'd want to see on this. And I would be very open to a modification that provided for those underground parking spaces. But I would be inclined towards a favorable consideration without taking the entirety of the foundation down. Mr. McLaughlin, you are, you are very welcome to offer your contradictory opinion on that.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, trying to strike a balance, right, if the board is to act favorably upon it. I think you brought up a good point with regards to the old steam rooms, also that wall to the right that seems to be freestanding to the right side, and the, you know, looking at trying to get the project done in, in the best way fashionable. I still feel that the project should be done correctly, and I'm pleased to tell, I am completely in favor of it. Unfortunately, you're bought the property, you're in a position of, you know, the cost, right? Probably if you look back, would've said, was this a good investment? But here we are, and, you know, I'm definitely in favor of proper reconstruction, maybe just throw some ideas out with regards to how do we get there, right? As it stands, I just can't, it's, we're, we're compromising the city and the neighborhood. And sure, you can put vinyl on anything, but what's underneath it?
Well, hopefully not vinyl on this project. Let us, I, I'm gonna go to other board members. Mr. Reynolds, any comment? Mr. Byrne, any comment?
I've been beat up on, I'm beat up on this enough. I don't want that slide for now.
All right. Mr. Talbot, any comment?
I mean, I, I think even the selective demolition of part of the, the foundation is gonna be pretty costly.
Do you have enough knowledge to offer an opinion on the $80,000 cost offered by the applicant for removal of the...
I'd say he's pretty close, upwards of 50 at least.
And an opinion, if any, on the selective demolition that is proposed, the cost of that?
Probably a good 40, because now you're taking it down from the, the upper layers, and you gotta bring it down to the lower level and then get rid of it, instead of just...
Okay. So, and we'd just be talking about the 10-foot, 10-foot in the front, and then the, on the, I don't know what to call it, the second story, the top story that is visible in the back?
That's gonna be the, the more tricky part, where it's gonna be more costly to get that stuff down, rather than just do a whole demolition.
Can you give a very brief explanation as to why?
Well, it would need to be cut, and then lowered down to a lower level, and then loaded onto a truck, or, or loaded directly from the second floor onto a truck. It's not just, you know, you're not gonna bring an excavator and just knock it down.
No, but you'd need to take somebody to cut...
You'd have to have somebody come in, saw, cut it.
Okay. Thank you.
Selectively, selectively remove it, you know, piece by piece. You're not, you're not gonna go in there with an excavator and knock it all down.
Mr. Gallagher, any comment on deliberation?
I will say that removing 10 feet of the foundation certainly helps me to visually think that that is a better alternative, keeping that building in line with others. It's more in keeping with what you currently have.
I agree. That's a great concession.
Yeah. I, I, I'm looking favorably upon that proposal. I would like to see someone come in and certify what's left, see if it is viable for what we're talking about.
I would like to see that before any further action takes place in the property. I certainly don't want, or else we're just gonna be back at where Mr. McLaughlin is, and we're gonna take the whole foundation down, if it's partially removed and then not structurally sound, so...
Just a comment, if you're gonna take the face down, and, and I know both, both concepts are good. Green space is good. Parking is good. I always look at it as though people do what's most convenient, right? And even though he's gonna have parking two or three houses away, people are still gonna park in front of the house, because it's easy and it's convenient. So, what have we achieved, right? Does the green space get, do we remove it for parking, or do we just roll the dice? And I don't know the answer, right, but we, we see it go both ways in the city. But we all know people don't want to park any further away from their door than they have to, right?
Mike, remember on High Street, what we did to that place on High Street, we made a condition that a fence be placed on the green space? So that parking cannot be parked on that, remember?
Yep.
Between Essex and, and Johnson, that house. We can do the same here, just put a fence on it, and the green space is taken care of, and can't park on it.
And then that would preserve the green space in front?
We could plant trees and make it a truly green space.
So, we could require some landscaping in front. I would like, if the board is favor inclined toward this, to also provide an alternative that if under-building parking is provided as an alternative to the green space, that, you know, different requirements would apply. So, they could provide the green space, we'd have the fence, or they could provide under-building parking two spots.
There's not gonna be enough room for parking. Let's just forget about, even underneath. He's gonna give us 10 feet back. There's not gonna be 18 plus a buffer. That's close to 21 feet that you're gonna have to have down there off the street, and there's not 21 feet there. So, forget about parking under there. What you're gonna have is green space. Put a fence up, the green space is there, we're done with it.
There's a 24 by 23 space on each side, so if it's a, in the nature of a garage...
If you take part of the building, then, then you put it in, and you put it in, in the building.
Yes, if you put it in the building.
Talking about...
Then you're cutting down on the living space for all the places, for all the people upstairs.
No, I think it would...
Because it's just open space right there.
It would be in the basement.
Okay.
I, I think there would be, so what I would like to do is provide that as an alternative option, because it is preferable, I think, to me, but feasible is another question, and provide the 10-foot cutback with the green space and a fence in front. And I, I'm gonna say right out that I think that this is something, if we approve, it would need to come back with the full plan, and there should be an expectation that there are gonna be modifications in the conditions, because we're gonna have to see how, how the proposal is flushed out. All right. Is there any more discussion on this? I'm going to start with a motion in the affirmative and review some conditions that might be provided. Before we go to that... Another option is that we could cut the bedrooms down to two per unit, and that would provide a less intense use on this property. Is there support for that proposal?
Yeah, it's better, I would say.
Versus the parking? Under?
No, I think the parking is separate.
Oh, right.
I, I think that if we have a two-bedroom on each side, then the difficulties that we're all concerned about, which are intensity of use in that neighborhood, might be cut down, so... So, I'm gonna proceed on this motion, a motion for approval of the special permit under the following conditions. Number one, that the property be operated as a two-family dwelling of no more than two bedrooms per unit. Number two... That the foundation... Be removed... For 10 feet from the front of its current building frontline. Probably gonna change that language later, it's very inexact. But it's the 10-foot setback proposal that has been offered by the applicant. Number three, that prior to any construction... The applicant provide a letter of opinion from a certified engineer verifying that the proposed foundation and structure is sound. And providing a description of the modifications required to meet code. And that the building commissioner review and approve that opinion. That the applicant provide a plan... That fully depicts the project as proposed, which shall be subject to further review by the board. Condition five, that the applicant provide one of the following. Number one, a green space between the building and street front, at least 10 feet in depth. With landscaping. Including evergreen shrubs or trees. At the front of the building. Period. And because this question was raised, I'm just going to inform the applicant, dirt is not landscaping. Plants are landscaping. And a fence between the green space and the street. The fence shall not be constructed of chain-link material, not chain-link material. Or... The applicant may provide for two compliant parking spaces within the building, one allocated to each side. Number six... The existing foundation shall be resurfaced. And the applicant will present a plan to the board for that resurfacing. Number seven, the, the board will conduct a full review of the proposed plan when designs have been submitted, and may modify, remove, or add to the conditions herein. Number eight is a review date, and given the request that the board has made, I think it would probably be two months before the plans have been produced and an opinion letter has been obtained. So, we would look at the November meeting. November 12th, 2024. All right. Is there any board member who would like to add a condition? Go ahead, sir.
It sounds as though the parking lot is going to be used as a staging area during the construction project. So, I might recommend that the parking lot be done, installed, and paved before the project commences. You know, the, the abutters are gonna feel the impact of a long-term construction site and storage and all that, but I, I, you know... Storing, having proper access in a safe place to store the materials, I think is important. In a typical build, everything is going to be done on-site. You know, so, just a recommendation.
I would think that the equipment would hurt the final top coat of the paving. So if we had it to a point where it was, if I were to say gravel and dust, stone dust.
Base coat.
Compacted. But prior to the final top coat.
Yeah.
I think that would be.
I don't know what kind of heavy construction equipment would be kept in the parking lot, because you know, I don't know.
It'll be none.
Oh, yeah, lol. You could answer that.
Okay.
Sure, they're just vans and pickups, right?
Well, and then materials and.
That might be a good question, like if trusses and things are delivered on-site, are they delivered to the house or are they going to be delivered to the parking lot? You know, because the applicant did mention that parking lot would be used, but I guess it'd be good to know to what extent.
I think these, I think there's, there's a condition in there that should go in here. I think some of these details should be fine-tuned because we're going to see the applicant again before construction begins. Because we're going to need to see that plan and that letter. And so I'm going to add in a condition nine. And we might just switch eight and nine. Yeah. And we're going to say that the parking area on separate lot to be completed and paved except for final top coat prior to construction on the dwelling.
Does the parking lot have to meet certain setback requirements? You know driveways do, but is there going to be some green space around the perimeter? Is it just going to be a sea of blacktop? And then the question is, what about drainage?
So why don't we say at the next meeting that the applicant shall provide a plan for construction and development of the parking lot? I don't think this is going to site plan review, Mr. Commissioner, correct?
I don't believe it is either because it's a two-family and there, I don't think it is.
Okay. And so what I'm going to say about that, to comply with zoning provisions regarding landscaping, screening, and drainage. And that plan should also be brought to the November 12th meeting.
You have it already. But I'll make it.
I think we might review, so.
Also, sorry to interrupt, but would that be different if condition five takes a different turn? Because condition five, you said that if I provide two parking spaces under the house, I don't got to do nothing with the lot?
I, I said that you didn't have to provide the, it was either the green space in front or the parking underneath.
Okay, because if I do parking underneath, I won't need the lot, correct?
You're too.
I'm trying, I'm trying to.
So it's, it's two spaces per dwelling unit? Do you think you could provide two spaces per dwelling unit underneath the building?
It depends on many bedrooms now, right? So they're getting strength. Is it one and a half?
It's not a buildable lot.
Huh?
It's not a buildable lot.
What's not a buildable lot?
The separate lot.
Oh, I'm not talking about the separate lot, I'm talking about.
He's talking about the parking requirements per.
Correct. If I, if you want me to provide parking, let's say, under the property, then I don't need that lot, correct?
So if you're able to provide parking that meets the requirements of zoning, which is two per unit.
Correct, which is why I'm going back to number five, and then that lot will be disappear. You know? I miss, I miss keeping in mind that we're on the same page, because that's what it said on.
If, if it were possible to provide four spaces on the lot, I, I think, I, there'd be a lot of satisfaction with that, and I know there would be for me.
Okay, good to know, yeah.
And so what I would say about this is that if you're able to come back with this, to us with a plan that shows that you can do that, then what we can do at the next meeting is eliminate any provision regarding the parking on the second lot. Because we can take and modify the decision to remove it. So I think it's a question you should look at.
Okay, thank you.
I am at the end of my conditions. If, is there any other condition? If not, I'd like to move this to a vote. All right, and we have a motion on the approval of that special permit with the provisions, conditions as outlined.
So moved.
And do we have a second? All those in favor? I. All those opposed? All right, four to one, it passes, you're granted the special permit.
Thank you so much.
I think we still need a lot of detail from you. So I would have the expectation that you're going to come here at the next time and we're going to change some things.
I can't wait.
Okay? And I also, because of time limits, I just want to make sure that we don't exceed hours. I'm going to have you sign an extension on the decision being rendered until the next meeting, which is Octo- October the 8th, okay? If you could approach, I'm going to have you sign that before you go. Just at the bottom here. One? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you guys so much.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, evening.
You're still here.
All right, and now we have the last matter before us, CBA 24-29 Eric Jorson. This is 96 Almont Road. This is a request for this is a request for a special permit under section 181.33 and 181.416 of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to add a mudroom to a pre-existing non-conforming structure encroaching on the minimum required side yard setback of 15 feet, leaving 13 feet pursuant to section 181.416 located in residential A. Welcome to the meeting.
Hi, thank you very much for your time.
At this late hour. Can you please give me each your names and city of residence?
Eric Jorson, 96 Almont Road.
Thank you.
And Rhonda Busame, 96 Almont Road.
Thank you. And so why don't you tell us a little bit about what you'd like to have for a project? Thank you. So sir, could you tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do?
So we're basically, we're trying to build a mudroom or like a, like a four-season porch. It's not, doesn't have any kind of foundation or anything like that. It's just a, you know, just a regular, but we do, we don't have the setbacks, we, you know, we need two feet. We do have permission from our, both of our neighbors.
And were those letters submitted?
Uh, no, we got them right now.
Is it a one-story mudroom that we'd be adding?
Yeah.
Would there be a roof on it?
Uh, yes, room.
What's the design of the roof?
Um, it's going to be the same as the picture of the, the rest of the house.
So it's going to be roof.
Correct. It's just eight by 12, I believe.
Eight by 12?
Yeah.
So there are no dimensions for it on the plan that you've given us? There's, there's no dimensions.
Oh, no, it just shows, it just shows a setback and
Yeah.
They did write it in, the engineers did.
You've definitely made the most of your setbacks here.
Yeah, we, we can't pull it on the left side because their carport is actually on, on the property line.
Yeah.
We can't go back because of the pool. And then the, the right side is our only option. It still allows enough room to get, you know, the back of the house if we need to. It's gated, I think it's like.
So right now, you're, you're a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling because you, the front yard setback is 30 yards and you are 19.7, excuse me, 30 feet, not 30 yards.
Right.
And you are 19.7 feet from the front lot line.
The neighborhood was built in like the 50s, so they're all the same.
I did see a number of similar structures. It was mostly carports and garages that were on the right-hand side that were.
Same idea.
Well, within that 15-foot setback within that neighborhood. What is your proposed timeline for construction?
It should be pretty, pretty quick once this is approved. The contractor hasn't given us a set date or anything.
Okay.
I think he said it'd take a couple of months.
Yeah, a couple of months.
So not just two weeks?
No.
No. Not 20 years, though.
No?
I hope.
You have a little late-night humor.
Yeah. I didn't bring my attorney, I brought my wife.
I see, now I am thinking of the money pit.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so in order to approve a special permit, and, and let me just tell you that this would otherwise require a dimensional variance if you didn't have a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. It is much more difficult to get a variance and I didn't see anything in your application which would allow us to grant it. So that being said, we're going to evaluate you under the provision which allows modification of non-conforming structures, particularly single and two-family dwelling, residences, dwellings, and this is a single family?
A single family.
Mm-hmm. And so we must go through the special permit criteria, but we must also find that the proposed alteration would not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. So can you tell me, because we have to ask the question and get a response, why is it not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure?
It doesn't, it doesn't take any value away from it. It'll add value to the house and the neighborhood. Will improve that side of the yard dramatically. We had a deck that, that originally was, was starting to rot, so I replaced it and I brought it back a little bit and wanted it to be safe because we, we knew we were going to put something, either the deck back or the porch.
And going through the special permit criteria as I must, are there any social, economic, or community needs which are served by this proposal?
It's just, it would just be for us, for obtaining more room, storage room, because there is no storage room.
Is there any effect on traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading?
No.
Are there two parking spaces existing on this property?
One to, one in.
One behind the other.
Yeah, yeah. We'd like to improve that as well eventually in the future.
And will there still be two parking spaces after the?
Yes.
This isn't going to interfere with the parking area? Are you adequately served by utilities and other public services?
Yes.
Okay, you have municipal water and sewer?
Yes.
Effect on the neighborhood character and social structures? Would you say this was in keeping with the structures and the remainder of the neighborhood?
Yes.
Are there any impacts on the natural environment, including drainage?
No.
Will you be installing a gutter and directing the water anywhere on this?
There'll probably be a gutter, it'll conform with the rest of the house.
Where does the gutter drain to right now?
It drains to the back, right? So it would be the same.
So it would redirect onto your property and not on?
Yeah, no, nowhere else.
And any potential fiscal impact, including impact on city services, tax base, and employment?
No.
I would expect that there would be some impact on the tax base and that there would be some increase in value.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Tax, yeah.
And taking all of that into account, would you say that the adverse effects of the proposal are outweigh the detriment?
I would.
Okay, all right. I am going to just check, but I don't believe we, we have no one online. Would anybody here like to offer any comments, sir? Are you sure? Are you sure? We have an open podium. Like, I know this is dangerous, offering you an open opportunity to speak, sir. Okay. Commissioner, would you have any comment on this proposal?
No, this is one of those that was very, very straightforward that they were just trying to build a mudroom. We discussed internally and thanks to our team members of finding that non-conformity so that, so that this didn't have to come in for a dimensional variance.
It was a good find, sir. I'm going to note that there's no comment on this property from city departments, other than that, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Byrne, Mr., Mr. Gallagher, Mr. McLaughlin.
We're going to please the mother-in-law, or my mother-in-law with us.
Let's make this one easy. I said this board makes easy decisions.
Oh, Mr. Commissioner, keep your tongue in your head at points in time. Mr. McLaughlin, do you have any questions? Okay. So I want to confirm, this is, the dimensions are 10 by 20?
10 by 12.
10 by 12.
No, sorry, sorry, 8 by 12.
8 by 12.
Yeah.
So if the board approves this, there's going to be a specific reduction in the setback to 13 feet for the structure as proposed according to the plan that you've submitted. And that means that you will also need to submit an as-built plan, which means after construction is completed, somebody goes out and measures and proves that you've stayed within the lines
Okay.
of the building apartment. And where we are specific with the relief offered, you must stay within the lines or you're going to have to come back to us and we may not be able to help you with that.
We're going to stay in the lines.
Stay within the lines.
No offense to anybody.
That is a measure once, cut twice.
Yes. We still, we still have the original lines from the survey there too, so.
Good.
Yeah.
It will be helpful. All right, anything else before we close and?
Do you want those letters?
The neighbors?
Yes. All right, so this is a letter from Edward Rivera and Roxanne Myers.
The other ones on the right.
Okay, so they would be the ones primarily affected by what you're doing. And this letter says, "We are the residents of 102 Almont Road. Our neighbors Eric and Rhonda are seeking a variance to build a mudroom on their house, thankfully not. We have no issues with them moving forward with the additions." That is dated September 24th. Likewise, we have a letter from Lauren Tracy at 90 Almont Road who states that we have no issues with them moving forward with the addition. I'm going to get these to you so they can be inserted in the minutes. Thank you for bringing them. Without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. Looking at this application, it seems like the petitioners have criteria. As far as conditions, we would say that the construction is to be substantially according to the Dillison Roy Plan dated April 12th, 2024. That the proposed addition is to be 8 by 12.
8 by 12.
That the right side yard setback is reduced to 13 feet. And that the applicant. and that the applicant shall submit an as-built plan to the building department prior to receiving a certificate of completion. Is there any other proposal for a condition? Is there any comment on the application? I'd be looking for a motion with those conditions in favor of the special permit.
Make a motion in the ZBA 2024-29 for the property at 96 Almont Road for the special permit as requested with the conditions as stated by the chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Special permit is granted. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And you did your project.
Public work waiting.
Yes, it is.
For sure. Thank you.
Unless anything else is needed to be discussed, may I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Excellent motion, sir.
Good night, zonies.
Aye. Meeting's concluded. Good night, everybody.